Some things here. And you are all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. It is six o'clock on the nineteenth November twenty twenty four. And I have a motion to call the meeting to order. You can feel all is in favor. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing environment and respect during meetings. So we ask all members to interact in polite manner even when there's disagreement. Value the participation of our community. When everyone participates, including marginalized women or test community, you're welcome and expected. We ask our community members to participate to commit to standards and respect our community. There are no walk-ins here. Are there any walk-ins on? The Zoom? No?
Mr. Gitter, you have no hands raised virtually.
All right. Thank you. So we will go to the report with town administrator.
Good evening. Let's start with the water treatment plant. A big thing that we see this week, our tractor is starting to dig the foundation. And the contract for the concrete will be in this week, starting in four weeks. Point concrete probably next two weeks. So really the first indication of where the building is going to be, the first actual work on the building. Uh, the board of health, such as public schools and missionary advisory, has been increasing the number of pertussis, whooping cough, mycoplasma pneumonia, blocking of any typical pneumonia. Infectious dog with commonwealth. Please be aware of the signs and symptoms of these. You can visit the board of health website for more information. I'll check with the local physician. Has it gone around? Mass D E P has declared a level two drug condition for southeast region with companion situate. This level is defined as a significant drought. For these conditions, situate is required to implement the following water use restriction. All non-essential outdoor water uses are banned, except for the following. Watering ornamentals, flower gardens, pip irrigation, handheld hoses or watering cans are permitted. Restriction will remain in place until drought conditions are low or lifted by the Commonwealth. The sister city Cape Verde, San Antonio, Del Fogo invite residents to join us on Saturday, November twenty third from one to four. And untold brewery for the celebration of state day, Catarina Day. They will have food, live music, games, cram, and a special beer group just for the occasion. Then again, Saturday, November twenty third, one to four, and untold brewery in sixth country way. City Police Department, along with our partners in Metro Lake, our local regional police organization. We conducting training at the Maritime Center this Thursday. Training will include dive and line training among other activities. You will see a small police presence Thursday at the Maritime Center. Just to bring the board up to speed on the tennis court project, that project is substantially finished and buttoned up for the winter. As I told you before, we were not able to complete the heating of the courts. They had in line, the tennis nets were put up, we took those back down. So will be open in time for the spring tennis season, tennis teams will be able to play in those tennis courts. We've got the season, once the weather gets warmer up, we'll put back the painting and put up the screens that will go around the court. We won't put those on for the summer either, so. Uh, substantially completed with the exception of the painting and the screen that you were backing up. Fire chief wishes to alert people that allow the drought. We have a red flag warning in the Commonwealth, including situate. No outdoor burning should be conducted at all at this point. That includes outdoor fire pits. Until such time as that red flag warning is lifted. The board of health is also letting people know there are additional flu clinics every Friday from nine to eleven in the board of health office. Registration is required and that can also be done online on the board of health webpage. City Food Pantry continues seeing increase in clients, particularly around the holiday season. The most needed items we made canned pasta, hot chocolate, mac and cheese, canned hash, canned white beans, bread mix, canned tuna, jello, and jello pudding, amberi humble, I'm a posticize and not official sweet. Drop off the food pantry during normal operating hours. On the bit behind the old gates, city library, pillars market, and Shaw's also bought for the pantry. And finally, a big shout out to the third grade psycho football team on winning their league super bowl this past weekend. Congratulations to the players and coaches on their achievement. And I know that Coach Devine is keeping an eye out until you get to the high school, like the high school team. So congratulations to them and good luck to the citizens of Salas this Friday, the semifinals.
Is it Saturday?
This is Saturday?
Saturday.
Yes, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I just remembered.
So the what's the now? They win that, then it's off to July for the Super Bowl.
Powerhouse third grade team. Not that biased at all. But I won't say we're going. I got that update in front.
Yeah. I want to know.
I want. Any questions?
I just, my compliments on the tennis court. I stopped for the last turn to look at it. It's amazing. You see it in the boot prints. You see it in the plan, but when you see it physically none, it's just amazing over there. Makes that whole area look well, well, well planned. So my compliments to everybody. That makes believe.
Good?
Yeah.
You got it? All right. I'm just here to reiterate on this pertussis. Well, given the fact that these rates are going up. Please take it seriously. Talk to your, talk to your doctor about what's happening. And it may not be your child, but it could be the child next to you.
Or it could be you.
Could be you.
Well, let's get you popped.
Right. It could be anyone. And I know for a fact we have kids autoimmune disease or immunotherapy. They need it as much as anyone else protecting everyone. So please talk to your doctor. Uh, yes, right. Let's everyone. With that, uh, we are going to go into departmental budget presentations. And we're going to start with the commission on disabilities. And I think we have, I think I did see Athena on there. How are you doing?
Hello there. Athena Brodsky for the commission on disabilities. Thank you. Now, how would you like me to present this?
Well, first thing, just let everyone here know that is that's number five forty-nine. I, I, I think we have the numbers, but if you can kind of give us a kind of a roundup of some successes and things you think we want to know that you've, that you've kind of done this year, um, and that you want the folks at home to know. And what you think this budget will kind of help them do, if that kind of makes sense. So yeah. The numbers are, we can look at that, we can talk about it, but kind of a little review, if that makes sense.
Okay. I'll talk about the accomplishments of the commission on disabilities this year. So we've been involved in several projects this year and provided technical assistance to residents. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. To residences, businesses, and several projects. And various town agencies, committees, and boards regarding ADA compliance, compliance with the American Disabilities Act. Um, so we welcomed a new member, Pete Petirnik in July two thousand twenty-four. I'm hearing an echo, so I'm going to lower my volume. Sorry. We welcomed our first student intern Clara Adams last year, but she's been there now for two years. She's a senior and graduating. She has served as an ambassador to the high school's teachers and students. She's helped develop a high school logo content contest and for a C O D banner. She worked at our March two thousand twenty-four accessibility awareness event, which I'll talk to more about later. And she impressed all the vendors, some of them wanting her to work for them for the summer. She's been great. And so I think one of the most positive things we did this year was we held our fourth annual accessibility awareness event on March ninth, two thousand twenty-four. There's a typo, sorry. So our model has been so successful in providing information and access to programs that, and that the Hingham Commission on Disabilities asked to co-sponsor it with us this year, and they did. Next year, we hope that the Norwell Commission on Disabilities will also help co-sponsor with us. And we bring different organizations to, to, to Citrus residents, but people from other towns come too. And two things that happened this year, one, one woman who works in a pharmacy in Citrus. She decided to come visit to see if there was anything for her parents. And she said, I, I've never come. I never came these past few years, but oh my gosh, there's so much information here for me. Why didn't I come before? And the other thing that, you know, if you save one, if you make one difference, you've made a big difference, as the saying goes. This woman who's blind and elderly woman came in with her two grown adult daughters. And she was looking for a program that provided with audio books. She knew about the library, but she wanted to do something different. So we connected her with Talking Information Center in Marshfield, which is a program that reads books and newspapers to, to people twenty-four hours a day all around the world. And so she connected with them and her two older daughters volunteered to be readers for their program. So that I think was one of the best things that happened out of that event in March. So we'll be having the next one in October, October eighteenth of two thousand twenty-five. We booked the gym. So that's very exciting. And another exciting thing we did for the gym itself in the high school. We worked with the school committee and we got push button doors for the men and ladies rooms, bathrooms, restrooms at the in the gym because at the accessibility awareness event, there were people who had mobility issues and were in scooters or wheelchairs and needed help to open the doors. And they had to put a wedge in to hold the door open so that that person could leave. And we said, no, no, we need, we need to push button doors. So spoke with Nancy Holt and she very aptly referred us to the school committee. And within three months, school committee arranged to have those push button doors in and the commission on disabilities provided the funding for the hardware for those doors. So we had some money left. We had donated money for other things during the year. But we had a chunk of money left and so we used that up to help the school committee make those doors available. And so I would, I don't know. Those were the, those were the main things. Do you have any questions?
The, the main thing is you're helping people left and right. All of your different, different areas. I mean, it's the work you're able to do on the little, the limited budget is amazing. I was on that hall, Zoom, all these different towns. We're getting involved. It's stretching across the region. Cambridge, who does facilities, he's here in the room. We'll make sure, we'll talk to him at some point. Make sure all these great ideas and things that are here. I mean, it's fabulous to work. You guys go. Do. That was kind of setting that up a little bit, but I didn't know if the folks had questions because it is, it's the work you do is so valuable.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to, Athena, um, a number of years ago, you had to approach various boards and committees to try to get them to cooperate with you. Has, has the, uh, kind of things changed? Are you not finding boards and committees coming to you versus, you know, just going ahead with whatever plans they have and not insulting you? Is it getting better?
Pete, I, I will say that I think that people are willing to come talk to us and they do reach out to us. There's a different as we all know, different manager, I don't want to say management board, but there's a different group now with the disabilities commission. So is a different response. So people, people come and ask our, ask questions, people that are building things, people that they call and they want their plans reviewed before the work starts, which is fabulous. And when, when we call, when one of us calls, they're, people are very willing to talk to us. Because yeah, yeah, we keep calling and they're willing to listen.
That's good. I'd like to get the word out to any other boards and committees that have, there are so many things that affect people with disabilities that my hope this is that more and more committees, as they're working on various projects, will include the commission on disabilities before rather than after. So.
That's what we've been doing. I think, I think that's what they've been doing, which is great. And when it hap, you know, if there's always a way to fix it if it's not done, but people are, are calling and that's great. And we, we go out, we go out to site visits, some of us, we, some of us go out to see what's there. Jeff Dugan is, you know, he works for the Massachusetts Department of Disability. So he goes out and takes measurements and, and then we have others who are certified, who are who are physical therapists who, who know what people need. So, no, it's great. People have been very welcoming. It's been great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you. No, well, thank you so, thank you so much. For the update and for your time.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
So where can I leave now?
It's, it's. Yes. Yes. You're, you're.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
You're welcome. No, thank you. I'm going to go have dinner. Hi. Hi.
And it's, but it's, um.
We're level funded, five thousand.
All right. We have a slight change. We're actually asking Kathy Gardner. And then come do her update because I'm just reading out. It is both.
Good evening. I'm good. It's fine. It's all good.
Eight oh. Technically eight elections in a year, to think about, right? You get all primaries, you get root town meetings, right?
Yep, four and four.
Presidential primary, town meetings, municipal town meetings. And then there's also the early voting.
That's fine.
I don't know how you do it, but let's talk about it.
Curbside voting.
The curbsiders.
Yeah, I can't, yeah. If the elderly can't get in, I will walk out and ballot and step aside and yeah.
Marriage licenses. Just so people realize. No.
No, we did.
Vegas.
We did. Yes.
I just wanted to get a taste of all, I mean, people think, oh, there's one election.
No.
And it's constant.
It's constant and it's planning years in advance. For example, in twenty twenty-eight, when we have this election cycle, yeah, I'm saving my talents and focus over for the next person. Which is part of my challenges tonight is to discuss the transition for me town clerk for the next few years. I've been organizing and reorganizing and trying to mentor. Uh, show my staff where everything is on the computer if you need it to. Don't re, don't re hit the wheel. You know, if you need a tally sheet, you just change, don't touch the formulas, just change up the candidates, you know, relabel the header and you're good to go. This last year and a half has been a challenge planning these events. I'm not going to lie, but the election laws that evolve and the responsibilities that are put upon many clerks around the Commonwealth, not just my office. It poses challenges. And you know the size of your office. I said last week, I said, you couldn't fit a key to them in the office with all the supplies and everything, not me, that crap, you know? Uh, prior to the election, I should say. But other than that, um, everything, I'm, I'm blessed. The town is blessed, by the way. I cannot extend. I can't even verbalize how grateful I am to the many departments around the town. It's not just our office that gets this going. It's everybody. It's the cooperation of every office in town hall. From the treasurers dealing with us in the postage meter, listening to that with thousands of ballots going up to Tom Ryan helping us who have been after bin and ballot box after ballot box. To DPW helping us set up everything, to the schools, to operation, to you. All of it. I mean, it's not a one man show. It's, it's literally, it takes cooperation of so many departments. And I'm so grateful for the support that our office has. It's just, it's amazing. It amazes me every time. And every setup, the setup gets easier. You know, it's still the same setup, whether, like town meeting last night, whether we have twelve hundred people show up to town meeting, four hundred and fourteen last night. It's the same. It's the same setup. Still have to certify the same. It's all the same. So I, how do we encourage now voter participation? I, I'm, I don't know. You gotta show an interest. This is our form of government. It's not going to change. You can't really do remote because you need to prove, um, voters, you know, that they're registered voter. Elections, going back to the elections instead of town meeting for a minute. So we finished the election. It was certified and sent off to the Secretary of State's office yesterday. Um, we had an eighty percent turnout by the time we counted. We had a late count, um, late ballot count, I should say. Um, forty-three additional ballots accounted. Um, that's all done and then the certification of the town meeting, but, um, it has been challenging. It has, and it's, it's been fine. I mean, I, I don't even know what more to say. It's just amazing that we got through this year. And we no major issues with it. And that's the biggest thing. You have, when you have a general election, people think that's the election. And it's not. It starts with the primaries and I wish I could encourage more people to get out and vote at your presidential primary and your state primary, but your presidential. You know, everybody complains about who's on the ballot or what have you. Well, it starts at the primary. You know, and people say, oh, I don't vote in primaries. It's not important. It is important. So if I can encourage people to say, nothing, get out and vote at every election. Um, I had a voter come up to my table and she wasn't anywhere on the list and I, she goes, I voted at the last election. So I said, oh, you voted September third? She goes, no, I voted the last presidential. And I said, well, you have, you know, keep up the voter participation in your census to stay on voter rolls and need an active voter. But, um, and it's education. I'm not a school. And I'm trying to educate voters to let them know that return your census. It says right on there. If you don't return it, you're going to be put on the inactive list. And then it causes you more time at the polls. So, you know, education is important to you these next few years too. Which is part of one of my goals is, um, just public service and general election information to the voters. And, um, and that's it. What's? Do you have any questions?
I'll, I'll open it up with the interesting folks. Here, I know the recommendation, uh, two hundred and five thousand nine hundred. Working out of the same, but administrator, so there's no change there. And I didn't hear all. Sorry. Questions?
Just like, uh, you mentioned that you were going out to the curb. I cannot tell you how appreciative the elderly and this community were, that they are like, oh, oh, I, I don't have to like get my, you know, walker or whatever it was, they come in and they, it was, thank you for giving me that. Huge, huge for the community. It's, it's what you should do. And if you're an election official, you are entitled, you, you can do that. It's not like, I thought she'd bring down, you know, I'm not to do that. And I'm allowed to, you know, deliver ballots in my sacrum and all. It's all part of our job. Uh, but no, it's something that you should do, you know? Well, I will reinforce that. We all know about the integrity of our, your management leadership is, I was speaking with one resident and it was just floor, but you know, there was service. And that you refuse to take it from her because she hadn't closed it and signed it. And you can go, I don't want to see it. I don't want to do anything. And you had like, we had to buy the book. And that is the integrity of our election process there, of this model. So. That, and just the safety of election runs is the most important thing to me, to me. It's safety and integrity. That's it. It's like, it doesn't go any further. But thank you and I appreciate that. And it's an honor. It is. And something I really strive to, not perfectly, I may mistake, but in honor of the gentleman. Yeah, I just have, um, first of all, thank you. I mean, here we are tonight. We were last night. Quick last night. Uh, the last presidential election, afterward, there were a lot of frequent information requests that set, that, uh, town clerks got. I know you got quite a few. Was it the volume of those types of inquiries down this year or? Um, I have, you need a public records request in regard to the election. Um, I have one that's outstanding now. I was, um, advised by legal counsel at the Secretary of Commerce. As were the other clerks that got the same request, is she would respond after the election. It came in two days before, I think, the election and I just really, you know, I, I haven't even done this yet and you get this information. So no, let's get through the election first. But I did reach out. I said, I will reach out to the secretary's office and I did. Um, so that's kind of back here. In the back of my mind, I was thinking about that today because I haven't heard back from the state. So I have the information, but I don't know if I can give it out. Well, you have a certain right to respond anyway. But sometime when you are done with an election, you have to seal everything and lock it up for thirty days. And then after that, it's twenty-two months and they can't be opened without a port over. So some of the records that they're asking for, I'm like, am I supposed to take copies before I seal them? It's, you know, so that's what I'm ready to do. Yeah. But I only had, um, really that one big one and then the rest gives one other one that's small that I could do right away. And it sounds like that must have been a coordinated campaign by someone. No, it was, um, it wasn't a campaign. I would get that. I don't mean a, an official campaign. A coordinated effort by someone to request this information, not just from you, but from. Right. And it basically is to make sure we tested the machines properly and we zeroed them out. And that's basically what they were asking us, our zero tapes and how a lot of reports, but I don't know if the tapes are public. So that's why I'm making. Well, thank you for bringing that. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for your support always. Thank you. I do not have a question. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you as always. Real pleasure.
Thank you. All right. Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Enjoy your holidays. Thank you.
It was the fastest budget hearing I had. See, you're excited. It's the last I stayed out. You're outside the next.
I'm, I only have one election next, this four years, so it was easy. Thank you.
All right. Nick, you want a six thirty for us?
Six thirty?
No, no.
How long's starting our book? It's.
Department six thirty.
Oh, don't have six thirty. Thank you. So just usually off the side.
Actually, from pure, yeah, let's talk about it. So put our thoughts into challenges and opportunities. Let me, if you have something you want to go over, but you think about some things that might get challenged and something you want to get off to.
Yeah, I do.
Sure. I mean, I have a, I might go write a part. Challenges and.
Do you need some highlights? Some, some few programs that we added? Is that okay? Yeah, I don't have to go over the whole entire. First and foremost, thank you to everybody's select ward, Jim Nancey, our awesome recreation staff that we have. A rec department with also running staff. There's so many unique ins and outs. Uh, we're open random hours throughout the days, holidays, weekends. So it takes a, a whole team to really make the place go around. So appreciate, appreciate everyone's help and support. Uh, we had a very successful past year, having many new programs and events at Fort Brakes, which is what we're always striving to do, um, for all ages, interests and abilities. We expanded our partnership with the Course Foundation with the Community of Resources for Special Education Foundation. Uh, we have brought on the best values program for the elementary schools. Uh, and also a new all-star skateboarding program which integrates children, children with and without special needs. Skateboard program we just brought on this past summer. Um, if you have more of a one-on-one staff, staff, those programs, so they're staffed with more counselors and more directors. We teamed up with the bike commission for the first annual Citrus Slow Roll, which unfortunately, um, did rain a little bit, but we still got through it. Uh, still, still made a good day out of it. Uh, we brought in many different vendors there, bike related activities. Which turned apart from the rec department and rode out to Peculi Beach. And we also brought on the bike rodeo this past summer, uh, which was for the elementary school grade level children. Uh, this is a free program which taught kids the rules of the road and signals. Only in bikes, see the how to's. Step Play is another new company that we teamed up with. Uh, it's very variety of different STEM programs, Lego over box programs. We've also teamed up with the local NSRWA, um, organization to offer a number of different outdoor adventure programs, which incorporates hiking, fishing, geopashing, filter grid filming, and more. We've also teamed up with Senator, but, uh, Pat Kearney, your state rep, sorry, Patrick Kearney, who was the director of our new real type fishing program, which was a huge hit. Uh, we offered a charter fishing program for four weeks this past summer with Captain Kearney, which, uh, played very well. So we're excited for the future of that program. We brought on drawing classes, cartooning, pottery programs for adults and kids. And then one more program I want to mention, we started a women's over twenty-five basketball league. Uh, we've had a men's basketball league for probably over twenty years. Um, we had an opening in our schedule and figured it would be a perfect time to finally incorporate it with the league. And it's taken off pretty well for the most part. So we're going to expand upon that. Yeah, we got a New York City trip this past weekend, which went quite very well. Open to bring back a lot of the day trips, ski trips, uh, those sorts of things that I think we're missing out on. And, uh, yeah, actually one more thing I'd like to mention. The Mr. C's Community Spirit Award for this year, uh, is going to Kathleen McCartney. And we spent many years working for the rec department in our summer little people program, all-star program, and game day program. She was one of, one of the most dedicated, hardworking individuals, um, that's ever felt in the record reason department. I'm sure all you would give a good compliment with Kathleen. Uh, and we wish her enough above the best going forward. She retired from us this past summer. Uh, and yeah. Uh, and yeah, as you guys know, I mean, you guys know the projects that are going on right now. Jim mentioned the task force earlier. The pickleball product, uh, court projects are in the works. That started in May. Um, the ninety-foot baseball field over at Central Field was completed. So just a few things to mention there in terms of the projects, but other than that, like I said, it's been a real solid year all around. Yeah?
Clarification. For, for people in the audience and maybe even some people who are still on.
Yep.
Could you tell people who Mr. C is?
Yeah, Mr. C is Constantine, Constant, Constantin. Yeah, yeah, of course. Yes, which is why we call it Mr. C. Sorry, Constantine. Uh, he was, um, an unbelievable person, unbelievable coach. He had spent over thirty years, um, here in the Situate, uh, rec department volunteering for our, she saw the program. Uh, thirty years, just all volunteer work. Uh, and so we dedicated an award in his name. So.
And he was pushing to platter when nobody was.
Right, he was. Yes, back in the day. Yeah.
I think every child in Situate and, and at least one of his programs.
Unbelievable person. So we're happy to have this award and, uh, given to somebody who truly deserves it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
Just the calls from the North Pole. Is that on the agenda this year?
Yes, are you, are you on board?
I don't know. I, I might want to be.
Yeah, well, um.
Just make sure that that's going to broadcast.
Absolutely. So we have the calls from the North Pole. That will be taking place, I believe it's December eleventh. I'll have to get that date, make sure that date's right, but we're going to be putting it out there to the public pretty soon. We're going to be making the information sheets available, uh, actually this Thursday. So those will be posted.
And your question is, do you go to order?
I just can go to order. I think we're only asking for another hundred so dollars to the firewall. Uh, but that's it. Everything else will be well.
Hey, I don't know if you want to think of what our personnel.
Well, the personnel? What's Shawna? Yes, Shawna is unfortunately leaving us, um, December thirtieth will be her last day.
Or even Hathaway, huh?
The what?
Even Hathaway School.
Yes. Yeah. She, uh, she's been great over this past year and a half. Uh, can't say enough about her. Uh, we'll miss her. She will be going home to be a mom. Uh, and we're happy for her. So sure, we'll see enough of her, uh, footprints. Yeah.
Utilize it. And then, that's great. And, sorry, you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. Your risks and challenges, I know a bunch of them, a couple of them are related to the building space, right?
Yeah, like so.
Sharing a mile five length of program space, maintaining safe gymnasium and access to after-hours for the building secure. Is that, are we, what are the thoughts of pouring money into that?
We already have.
Or additional money?
Yeah.
So are those three additional things that would be of, done in my own?
I would like to if it's possible, yeah. But it would be helpful if we had, we have a pin pad, like a pin code on our front door. I think it would be very helpful if we can have one on the back door as well. Right now, we only have a heart scanner. But the pin pad seems to be a much easier and effective way for us, at least to keep the doors, you know, locked appropriately.
Is that in the budget or?
I don't think so.
I think if they had other calls, make a pad.
From the, yeah, Jim McDonald.
And then that, um, there's excess money in the fund because of the minor parking lot is coming out of that, right? And that's getting handed shared, right? And then one other minor question.
Sure.
We have a line for overtime dash trash pickup?
Yeah, that was.
Is that overtime or trash pickup or both? Weekend trash pickup? Weekend trash pickup? Okay. At the beaches.
But now the barrels are off, obviously, we're going to.
Okay, I thought I was.
Either way, so.
What? So it's gone down? I thought it was trash pickup, then it went down.
It, it, from, so we, that adjustment made between years as we negotiated the amount that was going to be.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. I didn't know if it had to do with the number of barrels we're putting in. That's always, we're not, we're not putting out there.
This is the type of stuff about, the people buy the beach stickers where they could, most of the material, information, material that I will.
We could, well, probably not, but we should still do that. But we're talking about doing more, thanks for Bill, more information.
About what, what it's actually being used for?
Just, yeah, like, like, this is a bigger conversation, but like, things about trail.
Right now, we get a beach sticker, which allows you to go to any beach that the town has. But I wonder how many people know how many beaches we have and what are, what are the rules? What are the, why couldn't we put some type of literature? Not necessarily a marketing piece, but something pleasant.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
Gives everybody a comprehensive understanding of how the game goes. You're going to come to the beach today.
Yeah.
Give some thought to that.
For sure.
Does that make the beach sticker a lot more useful for people that are new?
Yeah.
I like it.
I know.
Just curious, with Kevin's in the room, you're in the room. We've had, um, we've had exceptional weather long past beach season.
Yeah.
And the barrels have been gone. I anecdotally have not noticed any increase in trash.
Not this year. I haven't. I don't know if you guys have, but.
After the barrels were out, but the oozes up. Kevin, have you noticed anything?
We haven't had as much as, you know, pickup. There's still material in that gets picked up, but it hasn't been as bad as it was in past years. If that's why, after the barrels come out.
Yeah. Well, I'm curious, because one of the things we've discussed is whether or not, you know, given the use of that, whether or not we provide them in a time, like that sort of ongoing conversation about, you know?
Yeah, I think we're maybe trying to, kind of pilot.
Here it is, here, yeah.
I think we're talking about piloting something at Egypt.
Yeah, well, that's why, I mean, we had some exceptional weather that I've just found.
They also trash them in the pool.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Nancy, the, um, revolving fund, closing fund ran out of eight hundred and six. We're done with mine, we're projecting.
I would say we need at least four hundred for mine it. Like, keep in mind that doesn't reflect the summer, um, life threats hours.
Okay, yeah, I should do that. Thank you.
It looks great.
Yeah.
I think it'll still be healthy, but not that's healthy.
Yeah, yeah.
We are up next.
Down to twenty B's.
So twenty B's?
Yes, we have a list of names, uh, all of whom are always going to be working with the elementary desk office program. Uh, so Emily Norman, Michelle Daniels, Courtney Anderson, Tricia, who you know, and Amy LeBlanc, Julius Squinler, Chrissy Merritt and Sean Moni are all, uh, SPS employees. Now, now we want them to work for us as well. So, got it.
And, and this is the family for the, for Best Buddies.
Yep, mainly the Best Buddies.
While we look up, why don't you give a, uh, thirty second commercial for Best Buddy?
Yes, uh, it is an integrated program which, uh, incorporates children with and without special needs. We do all sorts of, uh, activities, crafts, sports, field trips, et cetera. It takes once, it takes place once a month over at the rec department. And at various other, uh, local, uh, you know, field trip places such as Boston Bowl, Starland. And, uh, there's one more, uh, the Real Theater in the Harbor. Yeah, it's a once a month, uh, the second Wednesday of every month from four to six over at the rec department.
It's phenomenal program. Absolute phenomenal.
Where's Shrier? When she started?
Her brother.
Her brother, yeah. That is great program.
But it works regularly.
Yeah.
Normal.
All, yeah, children, children with all, children with, yeah.
Eight hundred breaks every night. Thank you.
Of those with and without, uh, disability and everyone will be. Another motion.
Move the select board up where the following employees to work the boat will sit through a school department and sit through a recreation department. Uh, as Mr. Klein, our direct.
Ms. Campfield, second, and Ms. Harrison, all in favor.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right, next, my list. Beer, hardwood sewer regulation, we need to get that category, W, say, rant comes up. I guess, yes, several. Page ninety-nine in our stack up. Right, so we're talking EDUs. I'll set this up while my colleague is on the right page. There's new legislation for, um, EDUs, the regulations that have come out and are still beginning to come out, got everything.
Guidance.
The guidance technically is not out, but we do know, um, some elements of what's coming down the road. Uh, and so let's talk about. What else?
Um, I guess I can start off. I'll let you jump in though. Uh, the accessory dwelling units, it will be, we're thinking with this new rules and regulations, there will be significant amounts of accessory dwellings. We don't know how many or how odd it is, but consideration is if they are tied into sewer by right, that it could potentially use up a lot of the INI stuff that we're using to try to get them out safely. So the idea was to increase the fee or modify the fee in some way to help clear the sewer budget as well as, uh, you know, talk about the accessory dwellings. So it's quite a lot of what to discuss.
So I'll purpose a little bit too. So because these EDUs are going to be by right, uh, part of the discussion was, um, to treat all these units essentially equally. But this is, you know, partly an equity issue that there's going to be, um, a new unit of A to connect, just because, um, you don't have to, so you're still, I've had that same connection versus someone who has a different plot over there. This way, everyone's treated the same. There's no different. That was at least the initial thought process. Um, and also to ensure that, uh, we can sewer an situat by moving forward. So I will open up to some questions, concerns, comments.
Sure, yeah.
So right now, your current fee is fifty percent right now for hookups?
Fifty percent, sixteen thousand, so it'd be eight thousand.
Yes, so currently, and what, what is this right now accessory dwelling average footage?
It's forty percent of the main structures, um, square foot.
Is that what it's going to?
That is the maximum, that's the maximum, um.
The new one will be nine hundred.
Then what, what is the existing, seven hundred?
Our bylaws, I thought, said forty percent of the existing, forty percent of the existing or seven hundred and fifty square feet, whichever is the greater. Um, thank you.
So we're going seven fifty to nine hundred, forty percent's going to stay the same?
No, it's going to get super stated by the state statute, I think.
So the forty percent's not even going to be there, or is it?
Well, I guess the question.
Do we have here writing on the statute? Understand? And then, you know what the average square footage is on a typical home in the town situation? Because I don't understand why we're suggesting going to a full, a full hundred percent equal to the entire house itself for an accessory dwelling. That seems a bit exorbitant. I do agree that there should be some type of percentage. And when would this rate increase take, that's the other question.
Can I just say, I found the new rule and it's half gross floor area or nine hundred square feet, whichever is small. So that's the new state.
Whichever is smaller.
Smaller. Nine hundred square feet or half the structure is ever smaller.
Whichever is smaller.
Nine hundred square feet would be the most.
So if you have a ten thousand square foot house, you're not moving nine five thousand square.
You are not. You are absolutely not.
Does anybody have a sense of what the average square footage is for all of our combined houses? To go from some type of a guide here?
I don't. I would say the hookup fee would be around a hundred square foot out of, it's sixteen thousand dollars.
But if you, if you're going to already add to your house, you're going to add a piece of property or a piece of structure to your home, be in a.
It can, it has an aim for.
Piece or whatever.
Or it could be a separate unit.
Could be a separate unit.
Maybe there.
Right.
But why would you go to a hundred percent hookup? I don't understand.
Because your neighbors, they have the same sized house, it'd be the same. Why would you get a cut? I guess is the difference. So if I go to a new structure.
I'm already on that. I'm already on the block. We already own the house. If I'm going to add an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, which is a whole new house, so says the state.
It's a, it's a whole new house, but is it really a whole entire new house?
So says the state.
Wait, wait.
It's a whole, it's a necessary dwelling.
Do we consider accessory dwellings when people finish a basement and put a kitchen in and? It depends on if it's a group. So.
Because that's been a, a common mention in the past.
Because there are people who have done that and never registered the, the, what they did as an accessory dwelling. Only come to find out that now they go to sell the house and it's being considered an accessory dwelling. And therefore, they've got to pay the hookup. Um, so, um, you know, and, and maybe this isn't the form for this, but I guess my overall question is, is our accessory dwellings considered a fourth of the housing?
No, no.
So they don't give us any credit for that. Now, and it's adding, is it, is it considered adding to the housing stock so we're never going to get there?
Correct.
Correct. Well.
And if all these get to be added by right on the sewer.
Right.
Say goodbye to the sewer.
Do we know how many accessory dwellings we have?
There's an approved list cut by the planning department for permanent accessory dwellings. And there are a number of unknowns that, uh, may pre-exist.
I'm sure there's been a few unknowns. Oh, a little unfair.
So isn't our current accessory dwelling bylaw supposed to be deleted from the property? Is that part of it?
Um, you're supposed to live the primary resident, the owner, it's supposed to be the primary resident of the property. Has to live on the property in order to have accessory dwell. I think that's changing by right. You don't have to live on the property. The owner of the property does not have to live in one of those dwellings.
The intent of the original ADU bylaw, essentially, was you have a house, you have kids, you all want to stay on the property, you built it on from mom and dad and they stay there. With this new legislation, that's all gone. You want to put an ADU and rent it out? You can put it in, rent it out and get market rates for that ADU. So if you're going to be building an ADU and getting a market rate for it, you should be paying the same as everybody else is for that sort of thing. Because it's not what it was intended for, which was mom and dad, grandparents, whatever, to live with you on the property in a separate dwelling. That's out the door, this new legislation. And now it's just, you can build an ADU, rent it out, again, at market rate, no affordability. So.
And you're, and you also have to build two.
Yeah.
You've got two.
No more than two.
No more than two EDUs on your property. So you're an existing lot, you have yourself and two other. Correct, by right.
By right.
Yes.
So this is a very complicated issue. So, so you have a, you just said, I believe the new regulation, yes, there's by right, you can do these new things, but you still have to conform to certain things like setbacks and all of that, you know, and I think all of that. So that stays in place. As Jim mentioned, what, there's nothing in this that prohibits, and there's nothing in our bylaws currently that prohibits short-term rentals, air lease, that kind of thing. So people could use these to, which does nothing to address the housing issue, which is supposed to do. Um, angry. And that's a whole nother conversation we're going to have to have about, and planning board will have to have about whether or not we start talking about restrictions. Some communities have no less than thirty, you know, things like that. In the point about prioritizing, to me, I'm a little uncomfortable with using this proposal as a development tool. You know, saying, okay, we're going to pop the brakes on the things that could happen that are bad for. pump the brakes on the things that could happen that are bad for our town by, you know, opposing this, because what happens is exactly that, all of a sudden now the original intent of ADUs, which was like what I did, I had already won my old house, where my mother and mom could live with us in an affordable place and be part of the family and and all that, fully permitted, you know, everything I was supposed to do. And it wasn't, you know, I'm forgiven or better than the house, the women cost me anything, you know. So that's the intent, I'm a little nervous about we're being forced into, you've been painted into a corner using new regulations and we're going to, it will, I'm not disagreeing with that, but it's going to we're going to have some unintended consequences for the family being instead. And our, you know, our thickly settled town is a real thing. Prioritizing the capacity is, is what we've all been saying for as long as I've been here to make sure that we can trust these, we're such a, and because of the good work of our sewer department, UW, getting so close to being able to do that. So, will this discourage Airbnb development? I think absolutely not. Because it's going to be passed on to, you know, the rates that they're going to send it. I don't, it's a conduct, I, I I'm afraid it will harm residents who want to use it for actually improving housing options. And it won't make any difference to, you know, somebody that's sort of. I'm inclined with great preparation to go forward with it because of the pressing need to have sewer capacity in North City. But I'm afraid that it might be for not, so, I don't know, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that, because it really, it's really like, where are we going to put our priorities?
I said. So, I understand that it may harm the intended consequences. But I do know that currently, how the state is regulating it, it will harm us. So there's a maybe and what I know, so I know the state statute, the way it's going to be, it's will put the pressure of that north city of Scott. Or at least put out of its ten years. Possibly if all these people come up. We can always roll this back if we do have those consequences, it's not set, I mean, these rates and fees, you understand what we can do. And people are coming in and once by right, and once it's there, people are already home, this has to be done by, what is it, February?
February second.
February second.
It has to be done by February second, is there a mandate we have?
Yes, the statement and.
Statement.
So, and here's how.
No, we have, we have to implement their rules by February second, we don't necessarily have to raise the rates by February second.
No, but people are already lining up, putting all the permits and.
Let's, let's understand, but the same, your argument is too silent. We can either do something now, which seems exorbitant, or we can do something if we start to see it really ratchet up and really go, start to go crazy, then we could raise some rates at that time.
You're right, we can go both ways, I'm just afraid.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of lack of detail there, a lot of lack of information there. In terms of real statistics, real actual usage, we don't know.
One of the points that, one of the points that I thought was really good in the back of the sewer we had is that by implementing it in advance, one of the things we know, depending on how all this plays out, we are going to do, we're going to have to ratchet up our investment in INI to be able to keep pace with both demand of ADUs and with what we want to accomplish in our city. This increase would help provide the funds in which we can keep feeding the machine, basically. That was one of the arguments in the back that we received. Are there enough? A hundred percent, right, are we going to have a hundred applications tomorrow? But we've seen this in a bunch of things, is we go, oh, shoot, we should have really maybe captured those hundred applicants before they came in. I can guarantee the ones lining up are not grandma, grandma. It's the people that realize that there's an opportunity to make money, and if they're going to come and we can't stop them, that's an argument. We're increasing the rates to put our coffers up so we can continue advancing our INI projects to make sure our capacity keeps up.
Yeah, I mean, I think, to me, that's the real, point is there's going to be the growth in that and the usage, and the usage is going to explode, like you said. We have to pay to fix INI to get there. Even all those new people that are there, and so we're trying to treat everyone. You're right, there could be the mom and pops, and maybe it's unfair, but we do know there's going to be folks who are going to build two units or one.
I don't know that. We don't know that.
Well.
You're speculating, is what that is.
I guess my question is, when we issue these permits, is there a deadline on them, is there, is there any timeframe in which if you apply for this an ADU, that you must begin construction?
Or is it per state open?
Well, it would have to meet the qualifications, right, with the setbacks and have drawings made up and everything.
You have to make your investment.
You have to make an investment.
You can't just file the permit and then just sit on it.
It has to be.
Any permit has a timeout anyway, even if it goes to like.
Right.
A special.
Well, I'm just making sure, I mean, the law seems to be pretty unclear as to where the west here, I think. Well, I mean, we won't have our bylaw by, we won't have our bylaw updated by February second, right, that's one hundred percent fact.
Right.
And if the state doesn't have their guidance out right now, which is no backhand, which is another fact.
Hold on, just.
So that, those are, I mean, regardless, it's going to be difficult to implement. Because we won't have a bylaw, but I, I mean, I sit here, what, for two years and all we do is increase, we need money in the water sewer because we're chasing the INI context that is, it's like the mail, it always is there, we always find another one or another one. So I am in favor of increasing, of increasing other parts of the rate, other, other avenues of water sewer.
Go to the planning board website, it's a hundred and forty accessory dwellings.
A hundred and forty?
They, my notes said they told me a hundred and thirty-five, I don't know.
They found five more.
Maybe they found five more.
Well, the planning boards is.
Refrigerator boxes outside.
Yeah, maybe.
Planning boards plan is that they will advertise for a new ADU bylaws, only bylaws, in January. Hopefully we'll have the regs in time so that our bylaw matches the regs.
Yeah.
Once you have the public hearing on the regs, that becomes the bylaw that you apply. Even though Tommy hasn't passed it yet, and a grand bylaw, and so that's also the guidelines. Without the bylaw in place, there's no real clarity in the statute yet, that's what the regulations. We have to, February second, it's by right and it's not clear what permits the planning board, can they require site plan, can they require this, can they require that, what setbacks, what if it's not performing? Some of those things are not clear, even the state's like, we haven't got to it yet, I don't know. So, the rationale behind this again was the ADUs that were offered before were for mom and dad, grandma and grandpa. What we're going to see now are lack of a term, commercial, people are putting on their property, they're going to rent them out. Not affordable, they're going to be doing it to make money, planning boards bylaws will address short-term rentals, they will not allow them for short-term rentals, but that is the definition. So they're not going to be beat to death. But you're going to be putting that in to make money. A be mother, enough be father to make money. So, that was the rationale, I don't care, if you're going to make money, you should be paying the full freight. Town should be helping you all to take care of mom and dad, that's not.
That makes sense. And again, and I come back, this is protecting ourselves, the state is forcing this new issue. That's right, as Jim said, changing the way that we have to understand how these things are going to be done, done by right, and we're losing our ability. And so if they're going to treat everyone, every unit as essentially a separate unit. Then we have to.
Can we rescind this or reduce the?
No, we can change it.
No.
Then why, why would we go for the full fee? Because you are going to penalize those people that still might want to do something for grandma and grandpa. Think about the other side of the coin is what I'm suggesting here, we're talking about raising rates, raising rates, every time we're in this room, we're raising rates. And this is, there's not enough information. It's very, it's not even written. All right, I get that, if you, you know, you want to raise it a little bit, fine, but not not, not all, not until we have enough information, it's a real data. And you are penalizing those that are just thinking about maybe doing something for grandma and grandpa, and they do it, so they are in our town.
I.
I think, I think it's conservative, but we're the right way to go here.
I, I think we've also been very conservative. And I think we waited twelve years in North City. And we do everything we can to make sure that we don't slow down that process anymore.
When was the last time we increased the rates? Or when was the last time?
Accessory dwelling rates.
Oh, yeah.
They've been up since twenty seventeen.
Because it was a base of fifty percent of what the existing.
Oh, so it always.
It would fluctuate when that.
But that was in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, please don't quote me on the year, but I believe in twenty seventeen, like fourteen thousand, three, sixteen thousand. And it was fifty percent.
Yeah.
In twenty seventeen.
So four. So eight years ago.
Seven, eight years.
Eight years.
Well, that's. And to increase the law, please.
Sorry, so I'll take some questions from the board, I just, I name an address for the record, because I always forget to ask us, it's America, nope.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak and offer an unsolicited opinion about the subject, Ben. And I appreciate the board's deliberation on it. Can you just rename that? I'm sorry, Mary Ann Lewis, eighteen landhouse, Rhode City, Massachusetts. I'm also a attorney, I've done a little bit of research on this, you know, at the state level. And to Karen Campfield's point, I don't think, look, if a developer's going to come in and sort of, you know, if you're afraid of like hedge funds coming in and buying up a bunch of property and putting in ADUs, the fee's not going to matter to them. So, but it does matter to a whole host of residents who have lived here a long time that do, to Mr. Gilmore's point, that do and are considering, and a lot of people in my friend group are beginning to question this, do they have the right, do they have the setbacks, do they have whatever? Because there's an aging population, we're all living longer, and longtime residents in this town who have lived here, paid their taxes, are going to be looking at this, and I would caution the board, and as a resident, I agree against raising this fee, especially equalling the original hookup fee for a house. Because whether your house is twenty-five hundred square feet, has eight bathrooms, four washer and dryers and a swimming pool, that fee is sixteen thousand dollars. Now you're going to apply the same amount of that fee to a nine hundred square foot unit, maxed up. I also disagree with Mr. Bratton's assessment of what constitutes an ADU. Currently, our bylaws require that a store be in a facility for it to be an ADU. That's the way the bylaws are written, and it may be under review, as Jim Bedrow said, come January, but for folks to just sort of make up their own as they go along, I think is a dangerous precedent. I would also contend that in terms of setbacks, there's a pretty, in this day and age, twenty twenty-four with data analytics, we can probably get a real number, to your point, Jamie, about how many housing properties or how many properties in town are actually even eligible for. Because if you don't have the proper setbacks, it's not eligible, or in the residential three zone, if you're ten thousand square feet, if your house, if you have a thirty-four hundred square foot house that smacks of the mentally a lot, it's not likely going to qual, you know, be cost effective or qualified for an ADU. So, I agree with some of what's been said, but I disagree that, you know, we need to sort of hit the panic button and implement these fees tonight immediately. The other thing I'd point out is on the new law, it does by right offer one unit, it does not by right suggest two. Two allows the town to have more say in some of the might petition, but two on a property. Thirdly, I would say that the standard that the state has set out for the towns and municipalities to, you know, provide guidance to the towns and municipalities is reasonable. And in my opinion, whatever it's worth, it's not reasonable to have a nine hundred square foot ADU be the same fee as a thirty-nine hundred square foot home. So I know we're all kind of feeling around the dock here a little bit, but I know that also there's been a sort of like ADU czar appointed for the Office of Housing and Livable Communities that is trying to work with municipalities. The joint goal of both the state and local level is to increase housing supply so that it becomes more affordable for everyone. So if we take these positions where we're cutting out obstacles and raising fees and having everything so out of sight for anyone to even start to consider a brandy flat for their parent or children, you know, that are under a certain, well, anyone at this point, but, you know, people that have children under thirty, I can't take anyone away to buy houses. So I disagree that it's going to open the blood gates for developers. I think to the extent that it's going to help anyone, it'll be residents that'll either looking to have their children there and people see more of that, and their parents. So, that's my two cents, like, appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Chris Druck, one nineteen Stockton, I've been working with the planning department on the ADUs for a while now. Say anything, love to talk in offline, give you all the details. I think the reason why we're looking at doing this rate increase and whatnot is because there is the potential, we're a vacation town. Without the ownership requirement, I want to believe in, you know, the good people and in people that I don't trust. And this is going to be without an ownership requirement, you can add, learn on your house and rent it out. Whether it becomes an Airbnb or not, it's in the state bylaw, that they can't use it as a short-term rental. How that's going to get police, I don't know. I was unpacked and stared. And I'm not, I'm not armed for fire rights at times, I came for capital, so. I agree with the, with the increase. There's no limit to the amount of bedrooms, and although nine hundred square feet is the by right size, you know, we're talking about doing, you know, larger than that by special permit. Again, that's two bedrooms, that's a two-bedroom house. On a two-bedroom, I have a two-bedroom house right now, I can add a two-bedroom house to that and have a discounted fee for sewer connection, that's two two-bedroom houses. You know, that's where I was going, you know.
Well, would those, would more of those, your addition or your?
My suburb, building, my addition.
Feet or less, correct?
By right, the state is allowing nine, up to nine hundred square feet for half, uh, half the square foot, which one of those lasts.
Right, whichever is less.
And less.
So nine hundred or less.
As we go through the process, you know, we may allow bigger than that by special permit, as we go through this process.
Would there not be?
Either way.
At that point, Mr. Chairman, would there not be a reason to have a variance to increase the fee? If you're going to build another two-bedroom house, maybe then it should have gone, that kind of, well, that's the special variance, and again, this is, even, it's not, this is speculation, he might.
Yes.
You can't, sorry, but you can't have a fee and then say, all right, we're going to make a figure of that, that's a special. It has to be in the rules and regulations.
I don't think, I don't see this.
So I just want to make a trouble point, so if the goal, if the stated goal of the state is to increase housing, if it is if we're looking to provide alternative housing for our kids starting out and our parents aging out, it seems to me that the more effective way to do that is to sewer North City and bring three hundred units on in a planned community rather than not do it. That would encourage me to support putting brakes on the ADUs. I also want to say that I think, and I may be wrong, but I think there's about eight thousand households, is that, is that about right?
Eight hundred forty or something, does that affect?
Sorry?
Eight thousand.
Yeah, so we're down that, and then we have a hundred forty ADUs on. We're not going to have a thousand grand, is what we're. We could have a thousand investors. So, you know, we don't have all the facts, but I came into this with a very open mind, wanted to have this conversation. But I came into this with a very open mind, wanted to have this conversation because you can make both arguments. Um, but I really think that if, if the goal is to truly address the housing need of our community, the ADU is not going to do it, North Sittu is, and that we should do everything we can to improve that. But I think, yeah, Ms. Lewis brought up a, a really good point, is, is it, are we, are, have other communities considered a progressive fee? So we don't differentiate between a 5,000 square foot house and a 1,400 square foot house? Because that actually is common sense, you're 100% right. You have five bathrooms and 15 bedrooms, you should pay more because you're using more of the service. But that's not for another day, but do you know of other communities as well?
It seems if you were to survey 10 towns for how they do their sewer connection fees and additions and things like that, you will find 10 different, unique systems, one for each town. Um, many towns have, uh, fee structures based around number of bedrooms. Uh, other ideas that have been proposed have been like based on square footage. Uh, but there are, there are a number of different ways. Sittu uses what I refer to as the uniform sewer unit methodology.
Very visceral.
It's, it's, it's got, there, there are a number of sections that give guidance on how our fee structure works that could probably be refined, but it, it's what we operate on.
Right. And I think to Mr. Gilmore's point, you know, I, I think Mr. Mitch's point, to Mr. Gilmore's point, it would make more sense to have a graduated progressive fee structure based on the size because then it's tied to the actual use of the system. However, we're facing, we got, we got, we got our feet to the fire, we got a February deadline. I would be more comfortable saying, pump the brakes, let's do this, let's assess it progressively and come back and talk about it down the road. But if we don't, that where it comes and goes, you can't go back and change the rules.
I would agree with what you just said. Let's, let's go forward and create something that's not just a knee jerk, uniform standard, whatever. Let's actually create something that's gradual.
All right, last couple, we're, we're checking, first one, we're checking online, um, so let's see if anyone has their hand up.
Just a thought that, you know, hasn't been going through this process, you know. If, you know, the state has eliminated the ownership requirement, but if there's a way that we could get an applicant for an APU to say, this is for family, I'm going to sign an affidavit, something along those lines, that if the deed restriction, that it's only going to be family, maybe then, you know, something along those lines to either incentivize ownership or, or was something aside from our current affordable system? That we can incentivize that, and then maybe conserve.
Well, there's one thing, nothing that says we can't go forward with this proposal and increase the rates and also look at these other options and then go back. You said go forward, right, as I understand.
Yep.
Go forward with the, with the 100%, but also look at these other options in case we want to back down in the near future.
Yes, because, because in February, the, the bar door is going to open.
Okay, I agree with that, definitely.
So, anyone, no one alive? I'm sorry, I, I mean, again, the point of, of the fee, it's not the cur-, it's not going to be a cudgel against development, it's to pay for the fixes for the INI. It's not, I support the duck to be a development tool, but because if we're going to lose the control of who's going where, we have to pay to fix all these new people, fix the INI, actually fix the problem that's there. We have so many, how are we going to fix it?
So I have a question, do we have any INI projects scheduled that are not, are not in the works right now? Do we know how much the estimated rate costs?
Yeah, what is, when does that, when does that finally give you? The, it just goes on and on.
It does. We're going to never do.
Always find more. But I, I guess where I'm going on this is if we know we, we have lined up XYZ number of projects and they're going to cost us XYZ number of dollars, then we do have potentially a justification for this type of fee to help us because we're, we're not unique. I'm sure other communities have their developmental issues. But we have North Sittu sitting there, waiting and waiting and waiting. And we actually made the North Sittu project much smaller because we're not doing neighborhoods around here, we're just trying to deal with North Sittu downtowns. I'm really concerned about North Sittu. I'm concerned that this will put us back. But if we know that we can create more capacity by doing these INI projects and this is a potential source of funding, then I would feel better about saying to people, this is why we're increasing this to this. Um, and I don't disagree that, you know, we need to probably look at a different system of assessing people for a store. I think everyone gets manifestly evident that if you have an eight bedroom house, you're using a lot more, and you've got probably unsweetened fats with every one of them. Uh, so I just feel as though maybe there's a couple little solutions here. But I'm looking at this from, in the lens of sitting on this board and trying to figure out what can we do for North Sittu and how can we do it.
So we, we do have another engineering project coming out in the future for that, next, next.
And this type of depending on the bold rush here, which may or may not happen, um, you know, we might be able to fund that next project, which at the very least hopefully would help us not increase the amount of capacity we have to create, you know, on that, so.
Last two comments, we're going to go to Mary Ann and Ed, so.
Thank you, just one final thought, and I appreciate, um, the chance to speak again. Again, I would encourage the board, if you're inclined to take any action at all tonight, I would encourage it to be a delayed implementation because I think it's going to be a lot. If, if the state deems it reasonable and, you know, it's all, uh, passes, you know, their, their ultimate guidelines, which we're going to know soon around them later, then great. But if it doesn't, then the town has not positioned itself to have collected, feed it, you know, that 45 days from now is going to be deemed unreasonable, not allowed to open up to washrooms, whatever the case may be. So maybe that's how you incorporate, incorporate it. And, and if, and if the state comes down and says, no, you can't do that, can't be 100% and 100%, then it's more easily amended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, sorry.
Absolutely.
Just as a spoiler alert to Chris's report and Jim's capital plan, the 200,000 for INI was not recommended this year because there was insufficient shortage of cars between earnings.
There you go.
It's a cautionary tale. Uh, I know the legislature needs well, thinks that this is going to fix the housing crisis. Last big piece of legislation they passed to fix the housing crisis, you asked Gerald LaChap for 20 B. That has to fix the housing crisis, so. I think it could be funded, yes, of course, I didn't, but.
Yeah, and it's still the NDTA community is just going to be equally affected.
All right, yes. Okay. We've exhausted our opinions and thoughts. Um, I will take a motion, is there, Jim, did Mary Ann suggest for implementation? Is this implemented right away, to the January 1st, does it matter? I don't know. I'm not an attorney. Not if they're going to do that. You can mediate, I don't know what the proper protocol.
You can make it whatever you want. And if the, if the regulations want to say you can't do it, then next minute you roll it back.
I mean, roll back.
Well, you go the other way, as Ms. Lewis suggested, you wait until the regulations come out, then you give it, six and a half dozen.
I'll take, I'll take a motion. Motion?
I'll make the motion to increase the fees accordingly when the state issued the documents. And you can write it and say it any way you want, but you don't want my intent is. So I would rather not see it take immediate effect. I would rather see it take some effect if it's January 15th, January 20th, whatever, before February 2nd, and then it's written, it's, it's tied to whether the state finds the equal, equal relatives.
What could you say if it would be implemented depending on the armigay, armigation of the state regulations?
So we think the state's going to talk about sewer connections?
They're going to talk about reachableness with equal reach cover as well versus a house.
Well, it sounds like they're rolling away from a lot of stuff.
So we have a motion.
I just see this entire conversation, but, sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. This entire conversation is based on lots of speculation, with not a lot of, some answered questions, but not a lot. So why make it immediate if there's all these questions out there?
You asked, speaking hell.
Yeah.
They're not giving us. Right, this is part of the issue is that they have not given us all the information, but they want us to implement it before. And so if we don't, we could be in a worse position. This is an insurance policy.
Before what?
Before everyone gets the stuff, the silverware, but anything else.
Before, before February 11th.
I'll take a motion, I'll take a motion.
Before February 11th.
I'll take a motion. Yes.
Um, do we know how many application treaties we've had in, say, the last quarter, last half year, just generally? I want.
Uh, the application process is done by other departments standing up, an area that we still need to work in our group.
I guess how many have been approved? Yeah. But you don't know how many have been approved, Chris?
It goes through the building department. We usually get it out in fact, or.
I don't have a second on that motion, thank you for that, do we have another motion?
Look at, and the sewer regulation fee schedule to increase the privilege trigger, essentially going to be 50% to 100% and amend section 321A sewer unit determination, rental couples for one bedroom and studio apartments, one app to one sewer room, and one steering that's effective, uh, effective, I don't remember. I would say to effective December 1st. We need time to notify people.
Okay. Got a motion, I've got a second. All those in, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, all those opposed?
No.
Okay, it's four to one. All right, thank you. Now, there are times, we have a public hearing.
Yes.
We can be late or not early.
Late or not early.
And I'm sorry, I think.
We do have Mohammed Jax, Jen Sage.
Mohammed, I'm, I'm sorry that we're late, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
All right, so, uh, so we have Mohammed on the line. Uh, National Grid and Horizon have requested a new pole service for the charging station project, um, that's been going across town. The plans to install some charging stations here at the town hall. So I'll, for further ado, I'll let Mohammed speak on his request, um, and.
How you guys doing today?
Good.
Um, so in terms of National Grid side of the work, um, we're going to be installing a new, uh, joint owned 45 class two pole in between pole 110 and pole 111, right in front of the town hall. Um, on that pole, we're going to install a transformer and, uh, 350 KVA transformers and a secondary riser in order to feed those EV chargers in front of the town hall.
Listen, there is.
Do you have new maps in your paper, the map that was sent earlier? Yeah, so there's a map, a high map photograph showing you where the, um, the EV station are going to be placing the park.
Yep. And there is a, um, legend that kind of maps out what's what, so the circle up by the street that's going to be the utility pole. I'm going to just see a line into that 200 amp service that Mohammed just mentioned. Um, like two charging stations, um, areas, right, they're the, like boxes right by the, yeah, parking lot.
Questions, concerns, seems pretty, I mean, they're, they're 3A.
It's a 4A.
Photo looks like, looked like a grassy knoll from this recent footage.
A relevant. And these are for pay, right?
They are, isn't it? Yes.
There with the other one at the town hall.
I think we've updated those, those.
I'm going to take a motion.
Look to the National Grid Plan, another 30567412, to install one J O pole, approximately 328 feet from the center line of the intersection at first, we're sure. I guess.
But Ms. Carol, say, or Ms. Harrison, all those in the favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Right. And I'm sorry, it took so long. Back to budget presentations, almost back on time. Uh, words of health, point out. Not to get sidetracked before you go, can you remind people again, for Tusksis, we've got vaccine, everything, it's on the rise.
Very, very important that we all make sure we get our flu shots, our COVID shots. If you are feeling sick, stay home. That's why we have sick days, make sure you, if your children are sick, make sure you keep them home. When you are feeling better for more than 24 hours, no temperature, and you got all flu medication, then it's okay to come back. If you do have COVID, you come back with a mask on for five more days. But it is, we are in the uptick throughout the state, we haven't been getting notifications from DPH that it is on the rise, so.
Thank you.
That's good. All right, you, you took my summary.
Oh, that's all right, that was filibuster, that's okay.
We found your page, which is page 265, there are a few books. Uh, but yeah, tell us about the budgets, challenges, opportunities, the good and the bad.
So it's pretty basic, our budget is just about 90%, 95, maybe 98% personnel. Um, we do the same things year in and year out, it's been kind of nice now that COVID is on the back burner and it's no longer a public health emergency. The first year or so, year and a half was a little crazy and hectic for us all, so. It was really nice to get complaints that were what we were used to, you know? A dumpster complaint is much better than what we were getting. So, you know, our goals pretty much remain the same. Our number one goal is triple E and West Nile virus was the ones that triple E can actually kill people. So we always want to make sure that we continue to educate on that. Goal number two is we continue to struggle with mental health issues throughout the town. Um, boarding is a huge issue. People have a right to live, they want to live the way they want to live. It gets dangerous when, you know, neighbors are concerned, relatives are concerned, but when you go to the house, they don't let you in. It's, it's, it's something that we struggle with on a daily basis in the office. And it's something that's not unique to Sittu. It's, when I was in Quincy, it was the same there. It's a huge, huge issue when you come across family members that you think might be able to help and it's, I've done it five times, I can't anymore. So it's something that we struggle with. Um, and then our third goal is just to maintain our office records and with the permidies, working with the other departments that have adopted it now. So it's really nice to go with different sign offs and things like that, so. If anyone has any questions?
Budget, uh, recommendation, it's essentially leveled. So many of the issues would be, you go from, again, vaccines, mosquitoes, to, uh, just around the.
I, I, I will say that we, um, did recently, in August, Eileen Scotty, our public health nurse, forever, I think since town was incorporated, um, finally retired. So we did have a nationwide search and we were very, very lucky. to have Teresa Flynn, who is a part-time public health nurse in Hangum, apply for the eight hours a week that we have available here. And we hired her and she's absolutely phenomenal because we are in, I grant with Hangum and Cohasset. She's familiar with all of that. She's familiar with Maven. She hit the ground running. Her big, she really likes to do educational programs on skin cancer. She actually did the program that we had down at the community center, um, left this on, passed on. So we're excited that she's on. We will miss Eileen. We wish her the best. She was just, Eileen was tough stuff. They didn't come any better to her. Especially during COVID. I could not have asked to someone that was more level-headed and didn't get excited and she was a very calming factor, very good. So we will miss her.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You do. See, have you had your flu shot yet?
I have.
Ian, come on up.
How we doing?
Fill, fill the space till you, uh, keep it going. Alright, six sixty one in our big books. You're in the black.
In the black.
Underpriced, but it's very amusing, so it's considerable. Obviously, it's basically okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, last fiscal year, we ended a little over five hundred grand.
That's it.
And this year will be a little more than that.
Well done, Ian.
Obviously, yeah. Um, so last December, you'll remember, we decided to not renew the IGM maintenance contract. Brought the maintenance off course of the house. And we were very lucky and fortunate to hire Austin Cyrus, which all of our country club. It's a godsend. Makes it all look great. And a lot of little stuff has been brought up. Lot more to do, but we did some T box work this fall. And, um, that's really the main issue still with the conditions of the court. Everything else has been phenomenal, so. Pretty much all year, everyone was saying how we were underpriced. Know that, but it's a good thought. And still making.
But we do have things to pay for in the future.
Oh, yeah.
Even though.
What was that?
We're gonna pay for like forty money because there's.
I don't know. Yeah. There wasn't much put into private twenty plan. It wasn't much put back into property entirely, but proven wise, even. And as Kevin, Jim know, you don't do any large commercial mallers, all this stuff at the very end. So it doesn't, you know, we won't be.
Or groundwater systems, sprayers.
Yeah, like our regisseur system, which we'll be revisiting, that was approved like six years ago now. Uh, we're gonna have to revisit that to dive in. That's gonna be a few years. That was already approved, I think, two point two. That will hopefully be requoted, um, which we'll be doing in the next six months. So that, that's, we're gonna need, you know, we're gonna need money set aside to pay off that, but the cost of that will be paid off in about five years, so, about five years. And that's already a part of that yearly expense. About a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a year. That's after the five thousand.
Great.
Ian will be coming back and talk about things.
I'll be coming back in a few weeks to talk about rates. We are going to look at increasing rates, but the only golf course within a hundred miles hasn't changed in ages. Um, not by much, you know, I don't wanna.
Seems like, like a movie bra.
Yeah, pretty fair.
And according to our financial policies, that's a good deal.
Yes.
Um, mainly to make it so, I mean, we're not gonna lose any kind of, uh, play and any kind of means. Just for quick reference, South Country Club is our closest comparison in quality, force, everything. And they are on a weekend in summer, ninety seven dollars with a card and we're sixty. Just to give you.
And it's a much, we're a much better course. It's thousands of dollars.
I like it.
It's not even close.
And for instance, Green Harbor, Penguin plays golf, fun course. I saw a lot of beginners over there. It's a good spot. Walking only, different program over there. There's no carts at all. Their nine hole walking fee on the weekend is nine dollar per. And it's not even the same atmosphere of conditions and playability. So we're definitely underpriced, well, maybe ten bucks. It's, it's not gonna be, but I will preface that with back in a few years. The big buildings, we're not playing. Yeah. And, um, uh, it's worth. More than that is we do notice D best course input accounting for sure. Um. I know, I know, those are all lousy. These are much better. Uh, questions, concerns, comments? Yes, yes, sorry.
Um, I'm sorry, I couldn't find the, what's the balance of your team rate on that thing during this session?
Currently six hundred thousand dollars, but we just had yesterday a hundred million taken out of that and still about five hundred thousand.
Yeah, thank you.
And we're gonna put back another five, six years. We're on basically two point one this year.
Wow.
Already. And five, five years ago, we were one point.
And not the November seventeenth.
And this year, well, the reason, this year right now, we're actually at one point nine nine, which is every year it's a break record, so. I know, it's one point nine nine and we're already eight thousand dollars ahead of last year. Um, and we haven't implemented and the poll needs, so it's, we'll be over two point one. And we'll be about six hundred in the black.
Well, like a leather gun's given, they take away.
I'll tell you what's true.
You know, I mean, you know, it's, you never know.
No, you never know.
But a question, just for general consumption, um, the water you use to irrigate the course is recycled, it's not.
That's all right.
Correct. Yep.
Just so people who may be concerned.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
Use any time water we have on the water supply, which is not a huge amount.
Right.
Yeah, we're not using that water.
Yeah, it's great.
We have an old Kent Street well that the town used to use twenty fifteen years ago, drinking water that has magnates and some other stuff that we could look it up, the one that behind City Country Club. But, no, we don't use that water.
Good, good. Thank you.
Good, good.
My question was, Gates, we're coming back.
We're gonna look at that. I think you're doing a great job. It's nice to see an enterprise fund as healthy as it is.
Thank you. Got one status credit. Gotta walk in, I'll get you a question.
Alright. Appreciate it.
Cheers.
Alright, there's tea time.
We will be open, right, so anyone else?
We will be open until December fifteenth.
So we're gonna keep the course open until December fifteenth, barring enough snow and humidity and then dog walking will start on Christmas Eve. I can say that now, so I don't. A lot of.
Prepare to. Your Santa Claus lands his sleigh there sometimes.
We wouldn't know. I wouldn't, yeah. You'd never know that happened.
Wait a minute, are you talking about with an Easter egg hunt? That's a big deal.
I am not, okay.
It was, it was in here somewhere.
Oh, was there in the rec department there?
It was looking for another place for.
So, so. Uh-oh.
I knew I saw it somewhere.
Okay, perfect.
I've got to try now here without.
Um, no, so I'll tell, I'll explain the Easter egg hunt situation. I actually didn't bring that up to, I brought it up to Nick in the past and more in the past. Um. The issue is, we're the only business on that day that is open that morning. And to have two hundred cars on the driftway, it's an absolute safety hazard. The police actually brought it up in there because we had children running across the driftway and running and parking over by City Country Club, running through the golf course on the backside where the maintenance point is and just while people are playing golf, because we're, you know, we're open at seven AM. So the issue is me and Nick are gonna meet with them and try to figure out a solution. Um.
You just don't wanna disappoint children.
I mean, oh, we did disappoint parents, I don't mean disappoint children. But I do think it is definitely, if you've been on the driftway that morning, it is not safe.
So the moral story is that we will find a suitable, uh, safe.
Well, unless, or we can make an amendment, way to set it up where they maybe limit the amount of cars coming in, like it's, it's a great thing and I love it. It's a good tradition. It's of becoming a free for all. And that's different. And it's not necessarily difficult just because golfers have tee times and can't get in. That's one reason. Because they have eight o'clock, nine o'clock tee time and they can't call. That's one. The safety thing is the bigger concern. A lot of parents are great. Some parents let their kids just run across, right? And that's, when I see that, I get nervous and the cops get nervous and they bring up. That's, that's why that's drawn there. I don't wanna get rid of it, obviously, but I like to figure out what we need. We just move it up to early. This year, Easter's late. I just talked to Nick the other night. Easter's like April twenty seconds. Which is, this year was on March thirty to twenty nine, so it was our opening Saturday, it was our opening day, which was kind of crazy, but now that it's later in April, this year, if we can move it up an hour, that makes it easier and less, more parking spaces for people, regular children. But, you know, so we'll.
He was first year, came and said, can we talk about Easter? I said, absolutely not.
And he did turn me down.
It was.
I didn't just.
It was in here somewhere and I moved.
Caught me.
Don't wanna start off the career of talking about killing Easter.
No.
My wife has her hands on. Alright, you're here first, Ian is.
We don't have a lot of here then.
Awesome. That's now, now that would be, never been, uh, December twentieth? Yeah, December.
Saying, there's a rumor around.
He's got.
Bad rumors, huh?
God, people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cheers, thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's true. Council on AJ, Linda. Has it been a good year for the Council on AJ?
It has been a good year. It's nice to talk about the successful use of the senior center. Um, I will. Any of you all, you're really aware of what we're doing. Um. Steady growth and patron use continue. Um. It's really been, like I said, steady growth, I guess. A hundred people, I guess, I wanna say each year we can measure. Um, certainly stuff we don't even catch, but adds to that number, but twenty three hundred comes up as active participants with us. We know we lose some. Um, last month, just October, showed almost a thousand people participating in five thousand check-ins. So, you know, the individuals versus the number of times those individuals check in for different activities. So that's the bigger number, of course. And just as an example, I mean, that's a good, sort of a good problem, but it is a challenge. Um. With our thirty three, we're not fitness activities for the whole week. Um, the seventy one individuals all vying for this particular exercise class that we have three times a week, but obviously they can't all go three times a week. So, uh, policies and different registration, um, rules have to be applied. So that's a little bit of a challenge. Um, our average daily check-in, I guess, comes in at about a hundred and seventy, but of course, uncertain data, certain days of the week or month, it would be much higher, over two hundred. Um, and even rides, I thought I would mention because they seem to be up. Um, three hundred and sixty rides were given for October. So, you know, we have three vans available to us now, which are running often altogether. Um, so fairly steady over the whole year at about three hundred and thirty average for you know, two hundred and twenty five clients with those three vans. And we also help facilitate the use of the gantra on demand too, just because it is useful for us, especially if we can't maybe provide the ride. Um, Stephanie will help because that's a little bit technology driven or difficult for some people to access. Um, so on that note too, with, um, we've onboarded three new staff members to replace others. So our outreach and transportation and even our social day program had changes. So that was something and honestly, it's been great. Um, outreach has been very busy. I think the word is out that Kelly is effective. Um, a good resource for helping people with all kinds of things. And she also does receive great assistance from the social services team, Erica, and we are women that work with her in in that department or role. Um, and we also have a new president in social day, so, um. Since you're familiar with that, it's now at two days and we have eight people per day. Now, some of them are with us for both days and some are not. So we do try to open it up, but we always get asked, you know, if they take more because it's very wonderful for the clients that utilize those, um, those days in the activity. And also, as you know, we have Jess looking now as assistant director, so that has us now finally, um, at the point where we are interviewing to hire for a new activities coordinator who really will also be instrumental in a lot of the publications. So, um. One of the more recent accomplishments that we've been working, well, makes me look good like so much else really, but Jess and one volunteer really came up with this. I haven't even seen the newsletter. You guys, so maybe we have gone through it. It's a little fancier and bigger, so it's become quite a monster of a job too, so that is something that has to be part of that person's role as well as the activity schedule. So we are looking hard for that person now. Um. We did start a couple of different monthly coffees, so for veterans, which is, um, much improved and just better. Now we have Josh involved. So he actually participates and brings in either speakers or other resources for them. So it's grown. Um, we had started it maybe a year ago. And then also a newcomer's monthly coffee, which is still growing. Uh, a handyman program with a couple of volunteers, so that's been, um, very nice to be able to offer. Um, being assistance for people who can't do it independently and you say how to turn them down. Now we have a volunteer going with them that actually at least one of them is on the tax work program, so that was, that's what came for us. Food service lunches are still steady, of we see, close to forty eight a day, if not absolutely forty eight a day. Um, continued program growth, number of activities, even though it's hard to fit more in right now, so, um. That hopefully will be able to occur this year if we're able to sort of nudge the hours a little bit too. Um, we've continued our art exhibits are very well received, the providing space for community groups and committee meetings. I mean, it's steady. It's not overwhelming. It's sort of, not to say flattened, but people who know and appreciate being there are using it, but I'm not getting a lot of other, um, requests right now. And we do the twenty four tax work offer, um, placements. So not just in the Council on AJ, but we have a majority of sixteen, I think, but other departments are using that. And Jess will take that over from me this coming year, so she will be starting to contact the other departments just to see if we can. And we have at least thirty, so we could reset and we'd like. So, um, and not to say minor challenges of course, but parking. So not so minor parking is a challenge and a problem and sometimes sharing that lot is difficult, which we are, um. We're unfortunately forced to do on occasions. Um, and otherwise managing the reservations and the payments in cash and checks versus maybe trying to make that available online is really a goal for this year because it is a challenge. And, um, just making it more accessible and more efficient. The goals and objectives for, for me and for us remain very similar in terms of, um. More community outreach, how to attract and support different headquarters and making the center as welcoming and efficient as possible. That's probably the goal for the course for budget, more or less, um, level funded. Um, the only things that are up is what's become necessary just in terms of, let's say, for instance, trash removal, even as I had done this, getting up a little, I think so. Two fifty a month to two seventy five a month, and if we brought again, they won us. But also the building maintenance with facilities, it's just considering very happy to have Cameron having replaced Kevin and still being as big a help to us as he had been. Um, but whether it's annual scheduled maintenance that we have to pay for or services in general, which we have always been able to anticipate, but kitchen electrical and some interior needs. Um, and then other good news, the form of the grant, which, you know, I have annual, um, see of that, it's pretty large this year being fifteen dollars per elder, which is plus five thousand nine hundred more or less, so. It's a good, it's a good amount of money that I do use, as I think, you know, for one physician in ten hours of another of this planning left over for what else we have always used it for, and I could reduce my postage with the town because I can get to the newsletter anymore. And, you know, we use that for licenses and subscriptions and equipment when we can, certainly, and furnishing. It's a lot available, which is good. Anything?
I have one quick question that I'll, I'll bring up on the the event, how's the event coordination? Is that very time consuming, is it? I mean, I'm just curious, I mean.
Or just general.
Yeah, just, I mean, yeah, not to act it, but if people wanna rent their, like, branch of room out or other, how's that going? Because I know there's.
Well, we don't, we don't rent it.
Yeah, well, yeah, well.
If, if they're using, um, if just going for meetings in the evening, that's, that's not a big left for now.
Yeah, right. It's not, okay.
And in fact, now it involves opening the doors I used to stay and acclimate, but most everybody sort of knows the routine.
And in fact, now it involves opening the doors, I used to stay and acclimate, but most everybody sort of knows the routine, so they're really looking to go down that
So let's talk.
Yeah.
I mean, there's certainly other things that have come in and are bigger, I mean, the veterans, veterans, lunching that was we hosted, so there was certainly a lot that went to that. But they get volunteers, they have, one of us had leads doing that. There are other organizations that have been able to use it. Sometimes that's a little, but not really worth, sometimes a presence.
Yeah, I know.
Have to do that, but the rent, we, we have been concerned collectively here, what might happen if we did match. But it's something else.
Let's hear what he was going.
No, everything's great down there, thank you for everything, and we got here, thank you for your support across.
Just so nice to see it so busy, and people enjoying it, appreciate your dedication.
Sure.
Definitely.
Great, love. If you build it, they will come.
Yeah, it's so true, it's so true, the energy is great and made of blood.
Make small records, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Right.
So we're doing it in here.
Five sixty-one in our book. And we get Alvin, where are you? There she is.
Jake, John, I have the fax department. The back of the book.
Back in the way?
Yep.
We should go back. How are you?
I'm well, thank you, how's everybody?
Nice.
Big time for us.
I know.
Here we are.
Back out again, every night.
Yeah.
What just happened? Tell us the story, tell us the story.
I can ask, I don't know, it's all the past. Um, you're hired. Um, so obviously I'm here as a resource to all of you and can field any questions on the topic, but I'll just share a brief update about the work that we have accomplished over the past year, and then the vision for going forward. Um, the main, one of the main accomplishments has been transitioning from being a fully federally grant funded organization, department, to, um, keep coming onto the town books, so this is the first official year as of July first. Where fax is funded through the town budget, so I'm, uh, grateful to everybody for their support um, of this important work. Um, so we're ten years plus of working on youth substance use prevention at the community, and we've accomplished great things in that time. Um, and over the past year in particular, um, uh, just follow that. There's hot bullets on those packets, but of course, um, some of the highlights I would like to point out were a previous goal of transitioning some of the work of the in-person work we do, so current meetings and groups and workshops and trainings. Um, still engaging in person, of course, but moving some content to online, so more people subscribing to the newsletter, more information shared on social media, so infographic resources, so spend, just because people are too busy. You know, town meeting is a perfect case in point, but just making sure people have access to resources, information, even if they can't come to the town library for a fax meeting, right? So that has been a really important goal. Um, we've done a really great job with like, uh, a monthly visits to the website are at two thousand visits. Um, Instagram and Facebook is up like over a thousand percent, so that's worked, and partly because we contracted some of that workout, so I oversee the content, but somebody is helping me with creating some of that, which is extremely helpful, and that's part of the budget, um, in front of you as well. Um, another accomplishment last year was an increase in youth engagement. So it's sort of, now I'm getting good at this, we've transitioned from sort of, um, the, the more typical show up and in a t-shirt and volunteer and like collecting cans, we do do that, easy to access, sort of community service work with teenagers, but we have evolved to offer more, uh, media projects, which have been really interesting, more like short-term initiatives. Um, one thing we're working on now will be a policy presentation to the state house, kids learning how to advocate, um, research best practices, pick up an issue when they're going to be going to the state house, and this one happens to be about alcohol policy. And it's through a statewide group, um, and BU School Public Health, so a really cool media project, they can put on their resumes, but it's also helping the town, so I'll have them, uh, try to schedule one in front of you guys, and they come up with their plan. Um, so that's been really cool, um, we've seen a few, um, improved rates of youth substance use. As you might remember, we administer a survey every year in grade seven through twelve. Um, we're fortunate in Situate, where substance use really starts later than in similar communities, which is great, we're um, lady bloomers, if you will, um, which is a, a nice thing in prevention. And so we don't administer the survey in sixth grade at all, um, but we have seen, there's a couple of highlights, we have a couple of lowest ever numbers I wanted to share. Um, what was the first one? So vaping, which became a bit of a nightmare, um, has fought thanks to statewide policy, laborings, um, some compliance work with the local board of health even. Um, we have seen our lowest ever rate of have you vaped in the past thirty days um, is down to seventeen percent of our high school students. Um, and that peak was forty-one percent back in twenty eighteen, so it was really, that was above state averages even then, so it was real, you know, four out of ten high school students. Equal boys and girls, athletes, non-athletes, so it's really, it continues to tick down. Um, but it should be zero, because it was zero, um, before that was invented, um, so we continue to work on that. Um, that was the lowest ever number, another lowest ever number was actually cannabis use. Past thirty days among high school students is at nineteen percent, so one in five, um, high school students, which is great. Um, and, and now we're on track with the state, which is a good thing. Um, and another thing that we were, we've worked over the years, this has become something I've probably worked really closely with, when talking about young people and working with Situate Police, has been uh, like risk behaviors that students, young people and people undertake after using substances, so driving cars and getting in cars with people who have been using substances, so, um, the have you, one question that we added to our legal survey was a marijuana question, which other communities have added later. Um, and you had a lowest ever there too, so in the past thirty days, did you get into a car where the driver had just used cannabis? Um, and our lowest number, um, was experienced, it was sixteen percent last year, so that's a good number. Um, and our peak for that number was twenty-nine percent back in twenty sixteen, so, um, now the marijuana choice is very similar to the alcohol choice, which is sixty percent. Um, and we do have secondary questions for that, very often the driver is not a young person, very often the driver is an adult of legal using age, so that's kind of interesting too. Um, so we get some good gains, we just continue to try to like address all of the high, you know, especially particularly we target things that are current use, current risk behaviors, right? Not have you ever, we are concerned about those things, but not to the same extent, and try to address like real things that are developing as we speak. Uh, and alcohol remains our hardest to address substance in Situate. Um, so I take this opportunity, and for the viewers at home, um, to realize that we are not making much progress with alcohol in young people. Um, we are, what do we have here? So, um, have you ever, I'll share that, have you ever, high school students, um, drank more than one or more, um, drinks of alcohol um, for other than religious purposes, and that's fifty percent? The peak was fifty-six percent back when we started doing the survey. Uh, more importantly, in the past thirty days, have you drank one or more drinks of alcohol? Um, we're at thirty-three percent, so one-third of our high school students are yes. Um, and that compares to the state average, which is twenty-three percent, and the US average, which is twenty-two percent. So we're significantly higher in the Situate community than our peers across the state. So that's unfortunate, and there's a lot of cultural reasons for that, but it's, I think that's an important thing as alcohol licensees, for the board to, um, get updates on that. And, um, even more concerning is past thirty-day binge drinking, so often we're drinking, speaking to get drunk. Um, we, our peak was in twenty sixteen, that was thirty percent of all high school students who've made progress, and we're at twenty-three percent, so about a quarter of our high school students report getting drunk on a regular basis, um, and that compares to eleven percent across the state and ten percent across the country. So the alcohol situations, you know, is, continues to be serious. So we, you know, we've got ongoing work to do, we're continuing with like the variety of strategies that we have used with tweak them along the way, where the school has assumed my, you know, in the early days, we have to advocate for, um, better evidence-based curriculum, for more time in health classes, so lots of the things, the progress that we've made has sort of been absorbed by our partners in this work, which is the way these types of public health grants are supposed to work. Um, and absorbing me to sort of coordinate the online work is a wonderful outcome of, um, of the coalition model. Um, it would be helping, I certainly realized this summer, um, that it would be helpful to have another, a person working with me, even part-time, and that we discuss that, um, Jim and Nancy and I during the initial budget request, and you might have those notes in your packet, um, to have a part-time comms person, a lot of what I do is update PowerPoints and data and write newsletters and, and I love it, and I actually enjoy that work, but it's a big time consuming, so, um, looking ahead, which is a lot of the work that I have to do and to ensure sustainability of our focus on prevention, um, is, is think about ways to expand the number of people working on it, um, and models for doing that, so I'm really good at that stuff, and bringing people together, uh, across the region, we've certainly the hallmark of our, you know, substance use work in Situate has been, um, you know, the hallmark has been kind of the first community around to do some of these things, so Oprah does follow-ups, and police carrying, and having recovery, and all the good work we've done, so I want to get me motivated to do more of that good stuff, and, um, one, one concept that I'm working on is more of a regional model. So, um, in talks with Pomassick closely, um, but then also with HAM, um, who has, they have a similar argument with them to apply and receive the grant that we just completed, so they're funded, they have two staff people each. Um, but to sort of organize that and bring in other communities that don't have prevention people, um, and those in like Marshfield, Noel have nothing, um, Hall have nothing, Marshfield has a few volunteers, I should correct that, but doing the survey, coming up with evidence-based strategies, doing the work, so I'm interested in, uh, building more of a regional collaborative model, so all of us, you know, our kids have cars and they're going to the same parties, and we're, we're some small community, so it's smart to think that way, and the way I envision it, probably that funding wouldn't be at the municipal level, so creating some sort of new nonprofit sort of regional thing, or having a physical agent, where, and in the towns, have the individual people that be up to that. So I'm working on that idea, and, um, thanks to Jim for replying very quickly last week to a small grant that I applied for, but I'm looking at finding opportunities, looking at the opioid abatement funds and abilities to, um, pool and respond in that way. Um, we're also very grateful, we have a booster organization like the library does, there is a five-on-one C three, the friends of Situate Fax who is a separate ward that they do some fundraising, they got, uh, some state money from Senator O'Conne this past year, and they're wonderful. So when we need to bribe people with pizza, or offer scholarship, all that kinds of things that wouldn't be part of a, a primary program, they're awesome and they help with that, so shout out to the friends.
Should, um, I know it's part of the, for primer, we touched upon a little bit. Wha- what can you, what data do we have, what can we talk about?
Yeah, yeah.
For large here, and fentanyl.
Yeah, so, um, the interesting, it's interesting, but it was actually something that I learned really early on when I started doing work. I got involved in this work because of my, you know, family history with addiction, and being a mom with some time off in the community with a perfect storm, and there were quite a few young people dying of overdose deaths back in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, that could actually spur me and motivate me to action. And then I dug in and realized, oh, you have to work way, you know, upstream prevention, we call it, like, so birth substances, trying to delay substance use, delay, you know, prevent substance problems, help people early intervention type of model, so when you're talking about kids, it's really not opioids, thankfully, right, but it could do with other things first. Um, so, just to kind of frame that, generally we're talking about young people eighteen and under, which is what the survey applies to. It's very low opioid use, and it, it always has been that way, thankfully, so it's people who might have a um, maybe a problem with substances while they're in high school, kind of moving on, if they know what to help and so, or the circumstances were significant. So it's adults, so just to clarify, and then all of a sudden, yeah. So the, um, the, the the whole world has really shifted in my time in the field, from, you know, first it was pills, and it was, uh, people that were addicted to pills seeking heroin, and heroin has changed over time to be more strong, and, and now it is, it's almost exclusively fentanyl. So if someone is addicted to opioids and is using them in the typical ways, it's almost always in northern, in Massachusetts and in the northeast region, they're actually using fentanyl, so, um, it's really scary. But I would say that for the, the adults who are using substances in those ways, that the family's aware and their resources, and it's pretty clear, right? The really horrible thing that has happened in the last few years is the whole drug supply has become completely tainted, so even people that aren't using opioids, so they're not dependent, they didn't progress from pills to heroin to fentanyl in that sort of typical way, they're people who might be, be drinking and use cocaine, is a really unfortunately common example, um, and that cocaine is not cocaine at all, it's actually fentanyl. Um, and that has, uh, we've lost a few young people, young adults in the Situate community recently to that type of tragedy. Yes, yeah. And accidental, right, it's called an accidental poisoning, so it's, you know, it's still opioids, but it's, the story's not the thing, so the way you might help people is different. Um, and similar to that, our high situation is the, the illicit pill supply is also tainted, so when the DEA confiscate or even go to police confiscate pills and test them for fentanyl, um, very often, three out of four times in some places, I don't know if that's true in Situate, but, um, they, it would look like a Xanax or an Adderall, it's the same color, and it's pressed with the same letters, looks exactly the same, but it's not, it's fentanyl, so a college student at a party, or a young adult who wants Xanax, um, off-label, you know, it's really easy to order, it's really changed, sort of like the enforcement game, it's like really almost impossible, because a lot of them are procured online. Snapchat, Instagram, and they were delivered, it's like really, really complicated, so we have uh, partnered with the police to offer more education around that, uh, because it could be one time, it could be a one-time mistake, that's exactly right, and it's still good, so it's really hard to prevent something like that, um, what you can do is, is build awareness, we have lots of Narcan is, Situate was another one of the first, we were really up at the front of getting Narcan in the pharmacies, but now it's available at all pharmacies across Massachusetts. Um, you can visit our recovery center on Fifty Home Cole Parkway, um, down next to CVS, any day, and anyone in the community or home in any community can get a free Narcan kit, I travel with Narcan kits, I give them to my college students, um, and testing strips, and you can do that completely anonymously. Um, and you can even not even talk to anybody, you can just go into the bathroom that's located in there, and there are there are kids in Narcan available, so, um, certainly if you have a family member who's struggling with you know, legit, you know, a dependence on a prescription opioid that's legitimate, those people are, really everybody's at risk of any possibility of that, and just awareness, but it is, um, it's extremely challenging, so I think the, any of the interventions that help us with that problem will be at the international level really, with sort of like the precursor ingredients that are coming from China, so I don't know when that's going to change, but it's a bigger problem, yeah, yeah.
Alright, questions?
Thank you, welcome, welcome, happy to.
Proud to do it, and.
Thank you.
You're doing a lot of work for one person.
I know, it's a good thing I have a lot of energy.
Do that.
Yeah, it's awesome.
It's like it's never gonna end.
I know.
Throw it to the dog.
That's what they say, and that is one of, when you go to like some of the, the trainings, that's what they'll say, it's whack a mole, right? So as soon as we, and it is, as soon as we address one problem, there's always, you know, there's a demand, so that's really why I am, as, it's harder to work on prevention, honestly, but really whatever we can do to help people earlier, to help families earlier to prevent that, or there'll always be a new run. So that's, it's harder to get people excited about protections, um, but that's what we try to do, and, and build it into the water that we drink, you know, policies and all the things that we move, but, you know, probably. And, and now I'll add to that, the Situate Recovery Center, that, that really spawned from a open meeting, a fax meeting at the library. Um, I was just, I'm on that board still, I was just at a, uh, Zoom meeting, and they received a state grant to open a second location, it's in North Waymouth, like on the way to the Ford River Bridge on the left. It will have five staff people, so, um, this model of engagement and having a quarterback and, uh, and, you know, lots of support from town.
So that's open.
Yes, yeah, it's open four days, four days and evenings a week, and they're adding Saturday, and soon it will be open on a six days a week. Isn't that amazing? And they do work with, um, social hospital, recovery coaches, really cool stuff, which is much needed, but it's nice on the way home, and, and then I caught the road to, how we enter Situate, right down three A. But I was very, I rock and work man, so it meant a lot to me when that location was funded and, uh, you know, really, it's, we have great people working there, so great partners, um, for residents, there's so many you know, hard people that we miss in the prevention thing, there's lots of help right, right down the street, so, um, people should know about that. Great family groups, we set, host them at the old senior center on York Street, now they've moved, and it just puts lots of wonderful things available. It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Anytime. Anytime.
Inspiration.
Oh, good.
Thank you so much. Jessie, we have the library. How are you?
Good.
I also have a few of my board members here tonight. It was the house, Chinese airs and we have a part-time.
We're sort of kind of on schedule.
Yeah, we are. Oh, yeah.
Do it.
Doing the best thing, yeah.
I'll try.
Try after.
Good and good.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, challenges, accomplishments, you tell me. What do we need to know? What do the folks at home want to know? There's so many great things. Our kids are in there all the time. Staff is amazing. You're amazing. It's like, I love it. Ellis, good to be back here, I agree. Love it, everything.
I won't go into my goals too much, but I do want to mention a couple of quick things. Because one is definitely dominating a lot of our time and that is strategic planning. So we do that process every five years. We're super lucky to have Karen on our planning committee. So she gets to have three nights. It's really exciting. But that is, it's actually a requirement of the state. So the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners does require a strategic plan to be filed every five years. And that is in order to be able to hold for state funding. And which of course we want to be able to take advantage of. And it's not just a plan that gets filed away. We submit an action update every year to the state. So it will continue to be updated. And that will really, it allows us to get a community feedback, which we've got for Community Survey that we did this summer. We have this planning committee that's made up of twenty different members of all different walks of the community. And we also will be incorporating staff feedback as well. So taking all of those different pieces and putting together a plan with goals and objectives for the next five years. And really the great thing about it is having that community input. Because I do think, you know, libraries really unique in some ways. In that some town departments are going to do very similar things at every community. Because that's, that's their role. But libraries have a little bit of wiggle room in terms of the priorities that they can put into place. So that is a great way for us to find out what the community's priorities are. So that process will wrap up in the spring. We'll present it to the board trustees for their input and approval. And then it's because the state runs on a different fiscal year, just to keep things interesting. Their October first is their start of their fiscal year. So that's when we'll submit it to them. But for our intents and purposes, we plan on implementing this in FY26. We also, so a goal, and I bring this one up only because it's impacting us right now. One of our goals was to implement a new meeting room system. It's for meeting rooms, study rooms, event management within the library, museum pass management. And eventually, this is not something we have in place right now, but a library of things management piece. We have a software that we've been using for well over ten years now. Unfortunately, it has not kept pace with the, the changes of technology. We had already begun the process over the summer of identifying a new vendor to move forward with. But then we were, we were told by the vendor, our current vendor in October. They wanted to be migrating the system over to a new server, a new server. And unfortunately, we were contacted a couple of weeks later, after many, many outages. And told that that migration broke their product and they would be discontinuing it as of October 31st. This is a huge challenge for us because as you guys probably know, the meeting rooms are quite popular. We have, you know, well over a hundred meeting room uses last year and well over four thousand study room uses last year. So it's quite a lot for us to have to try to frame workarounds for while building a new system in the background. So a process that would normally take us anywhere from three to six months, we're compressing in three to four weeks. So it's been a real challenge for us. So if you've tried to get a library, a meeting room recently. We are honoring town boards and amazed. We're figuring out how to, how to do workarounds for that. But we are telling community groups and nonprofits to, to, to put a pause and to come back to us at the start of December. We do expect to launch this new system after Thanksgiving holidays. But I will say Anne Latenville and Colleen Snow at the library have, have been working so incredibly hard on this project. Along with me, the three of us have really been putting all of our entertainment to this. So it's, it's a big process, but we'll get it done. And I think the system we're going to have is going to be so much better and so much even more user-friendly. Patrons will be able to, not right away, but just study rooms, we're going to have to implement this in phases, just because it's such a large project. But study rooms, people will be able to read the line. I think they'll really like that. And then we'll implement museum passes and eventually we'll have this library of things management system. The library of things has become such a huge popular program and service over the last, you know, five to seven years. And this will actually allow people to do things like pick a date that they might want a particular item, which has been sort of a cool link to the past. So, so that's, you know, all going to be good things, but right now, you know, we're just a little bit under pressure with that. So in terms of challenges, you know, I, I mean, I, I, you've heard this from before, it's, it's stacking. You know, we're, we continue to be incredibly busy. We had three hundred and fifteen thousand plus items borrowed last fiscal year. And that's a thirty percent increase from when we opened the doors in 2017. We had a hundred and twenty-four thousand visits. That's a twenty-five percent increase from when we opened the doors in 2017. You know, we've had, again, these increases in services that we just weren't doing before in, in the old building. The meeting rooms, we had one meeting room that was not particularly well utilized, except maybe by town boards and committees. We have five now. We have three study rooms that are in constant use. We have the library of things selection, which is a wonderful collection, but it takes a lot of time to manage those items. To make sure they're in good working condition and to continue to add those to, to our catalog. And, you know, we're always asked to take on more. We had the survey to the community that went out and I'm really proud to say that we get really high satisfaction ratings. Ninety-seven percent satisfaction rating with the customer service, ninety-seven percent satisfaction rating with the facility. But people were really wanting to see more programs from us. And we're really limited in what we can do in that way because of, because of the number of staff that we have. And, you know, just to really quickly, I don't want to belabor it too much, but just to mention. How we stack up in, in terms of other communities. You know, our libraries open a significant, a number of hours to be a, in a smaller town. So the, the only other two libraries that are, are near us that are open the same number of hours are Wake, Nathan, Quincy. Which obviously serve much larger populations. And, you know, I, I compare us to, to HAM in particular, because we often get compared to HAM. And, you know, so we often hear, you know, why aren't you doing this thing that HAM does? HAM has opened fifty-two hours with twenty-five staff members. We're open sixty-four with fourteen. So this is why we just can't do those same types of things that that library can't do. We want to do more, but until we see additional staff, it's, it's just not going to be possible. So if we say yes to something, we have to think about what we're going to say no to or what we're going to stop doing. And that's just the sort of reality that we're in. I quickly just wanted to mention that we have the first test of the generator on December eighteenth. And that was a great opportunity for us to see what the library will be like in a situation like this, especially if it's like a multi-day event. It's six hundred and fifteen people in the library during that event. And I'm really happy to say that I think everything went very well, all things considered. We opened every possible meeting space. We were running extension cords. You know, we were putting out water bottles, doing whatever we thought we could do to make people comfortable during that. Especially knowing that most people are going back to a cold, dark house. I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention our fantastic supporters, the Library Foundation. Who donated over forty-four thousand dollars worth of items last year, including porch, new porch furniture, which was fantastic. Launchpads, which are these great learning tablets for, for kids. A beautiful play structure in the children's room. And some nice items for the team room as well, including a kind of a retro gaming table that they've all really been enjoying. They also ran a mini golf event last year, which they'll be repeating this year, who gave with the bottle of their blessing. And so they continue to do an untold brewing. So they're really working really hard to get information out there about how you can contribute to the library. And those great cattle projects that they fund. The Friends worked incredibly hard as well, running that food store that's downstairs. It's open four days a week for several hours at a time. And also with their donor drive and some other fundraising efforts. So they donated just over, or just over thirty-seven thousand dollars last year. They've gone to all the library's programs. So, you know, what I say we couldn't do without them, we really, we couldn't do it without them. So we just really appreciate everything they do with that. There really aren't a lot of big changes to the budget. I did ask for some increases in the utility signs. We continue to see just a huge amount of increase in the electricity side. And we're dealing with a very challenging issue with the gas line. We've now replaced the meter, I think, four times. And I know Cam is working very hard on trying to get that all straightened out. Because right now we don't even really know what the right number is for that budget line. But I'm hopeful that increasing it will help us offset, you know, any increases that we see. When they're actually able to generate a bill that accurately reflects our usage. Office machine maintenance, we actually went down for us because we utilized the capital equipment funding over the last two years. To outright purchase rather than base copiers for both the staff and the patrons. And that was a savings to us. Now we're just paying for a service plan for those, which is great. The one thing I do want to mention is that OCLNDU's Old Colony Library Network, the network that, that we belong to. Their fee is going to increase. I believe I have the correct figure on it. It might even be a little bit higher than what's here, not by too much and we can work that out with another budget. But basically what is, what's happened is we've had, Eastern Nazarene College has been part of our network for a very long time. They, as you may know, have closed. And so losing a library out of our network is, is just a big loss for us on the revenue side. And every other library has to absorb it. There really isn't a lot of captured revenue when a library leaves. Especially if, if they're not utilizing some of the services that, that, that we all utilize, well, a college library does. So, so that is a hit to us. And we will probably continue to see slightly more moderate increases than we've seen in the past, at least for a few years. While this evens itself out. But I will say that we have a very strong network. We have a very strong network financially. And so we work really hard to utilize reserves and, and investment funds to offset. So that no one library has to pay too much of an increase in any given year. And I think that is, those are the only areas where there were increases. I'm happy if I have any questions.
Question.
I do have one question. Thank you for everything that you do. And I know the staff is tough this year. I know you've got a lot on your plate. And new growth is low, so it's also hard for us to hire additional staff when our growth projections are low. At what point would you be in a situation to recommend to us to reduce hours of operation?
So I already have the board trustees vote on this in support of a reduction in hours. Just as, just as a way to, to support that decision if it were something that were to come to pass. I think a reduction in hours would not translate to a reduction in staff hours. Because the whole point of a reduction in hours would be to allow us to redistribute those hours amongst staff. So that we have some staff who are able to move off of service points, which is, you know, like being a target at a register. When you're at the register, you're at the register. You're not stocking the shelves. You know, you're, you're not creating your displays. It's the same with us. We have a lot of behind the scene works that, that don't get done when people are in, in the public. And so that really limits what we can do. So that would kind of be absorbed so that we could have people have that behind the scenes time a little bit more. I think what we proposed to the board was closing library eight o'clock, Monday through Thursday. So it's, it's a modest reduction in hours. It's four hours that we would be closed, but it's sixteen staff hours that we would give back. So it's, you know, I understand that it's difficult to think about having something like that. And I'm not saying that no one would be impacted because that's just not true. But we did sort of a heat map that our, we have a people counter that measures traffic. They were able to give us a three-year average of people in the building from eight to nine o'clock. On average, it's five people.
Yeah.
So it's very low usage in that eight to nine hour. And because we designed the library to have those meeting spaces be accessible after hours. And now Mike Mancello and his staff have, have been making some improvements that will make that even easier with, with access cards and schedules. Versus the, you know, horrible dogging system that we have right now. So those spaces could continue to be used the same way that they are now, if we were to close today.
Thank you. I appreciate the analysis because we do like, at what point.
No, I have the same question about hours because that's the most obvious, obvious place to look. But you know, it's not.
I have a line of questions. So the TA has not recommended the books and other media line items. Is that in any way going to impact our standing with the state?
So, you know, unfortunately, this is a moving target because anytime our, our overall budget increases, it's a percentage of our budget. So what we need to spend on materials is going to increase. And, you know, you all know that we have contractual increases in this budget, so it is going up. And there will be an increase of what we need to spend on materials. That said, I do take the step every year to apply for something that's called flexibility of materials. Because we are open significantly more hours than we're required to be for the size of our community. We are able to spend at a difference, at a different level. So we can spend at maybe a percentage point or two below what we would normally be required to do. Sometimes we still hit our mark and I don't need that. But I build, I, I apply for it every year as a, you know, just a case. So I don't think it will be an issue, but we may also utilize state funds. Because the reality is that we still need to meet the user needs. So if we don't spend at a certain level, we're starting to really do the service patrons.
The only fact that you didn't mention is the annual book sale is on December sixth.
Okay.
No, it's, it's every good to now. It's good shopping time. That's it.
Please.
Thank you, Jessie.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow. It's just that, I mean, I think that's.
Ask is our new policy. It's two and a half hours in. They're taking three minutes.
Oh, you're gonna be.
Oh, you're gonna be.
Pretty good, huh?
Two and a half hours, then leaving.
Yeah, I know.
How far is that?
I, of course, didn't expect that.
I don't know.
Why do you have to stall it down and planning your play?
I don't think you're trying.
Pouring the water.
The whole pour just. Then. I don't know. I mean, I'm just.
What would that was. That was a lot of. So I just have to. So thank you again.
No, I don't know.
Last meeting.
So.
Yeah. She's getting a funny out of me back.
I'm replying to everything in history. I have a pile of change on my back table right now. Look, can you take a move? I can move. Yeah.
I'm gonna give it a little darker there. No, baby.
I'm short on that last.
I told you not at all.
Yeah, when you're on the other side.
Trying to figure out how to read. Yeah.
Well, so thanks for doing a class of Westbrook.
Hold on. Gosh, that's right.
No, they got. I would have gone anyway. I drank a lot of wine.
We'll come back into session as soon as a missing member comes back. I know. Excellent. All right. All right, we are back. Right, so now we are discussing the capital plan recommendations for capital planning. For us to take away, we have this big sheet right here, a big spreadsheet. All right.
Greg, I thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. You want to make Chris Carter, Chair of Capital Planning Committee, Mike Gibson.
I'm just still.
I can say we have a very good committee this year, very detailed and attentive. And we're going to do this format a little differently so as to not waste a whole lot of time. I'm gonna go through the list, talk to bottom, and then we can discuss anything that you feel needs further discussion. So we have the coal parkway stormwater infrastructure improvement design. There was a request for one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty. There was ninety-seven thousand, two fifty from free cash and four thousand from a grant. Design engineering for chain pond at Sand Hills Pump Stations, fifty thousand dollars from free cash. An engineering vehicle, forty thousand dollars from free cash. Fourshore protection, two hundred thousand dollars from free cash. MS four, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash. Replace four thousand gallon gas tank at the highway barn, hundred twenty thousand dollars free cash. Replace the ten-wheeler dump truck, one hundred twenty thousand dollars from free cash. Replace new cover for the salt shed, eighty-four thousand dollars from free cash. I misread. The ten-wheeler dump truck was three hundred and nine thousand from free cash. Cover for the salt shed, eighty-four thousand free cash. Roadway sidewalk drainage culvert, three hundred thousand dollar request, two hundred in free cash, one hundred from available articles. Replace pickup truck with a one-ton truck, one hundred and three thousand dollars free cash. Replace HVAC cargo van, seventy thousand dollars free cash. Public safety hot water heater, eighty thousand dollars free cash. Ten-wire facilities plan, it's a nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollar request. I'll let you read out all the different funding sources from that. Eight hundred and twenty-eight is free cash and miscellaneous from other items. Radios repeaters upgrade, hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy free cash. Replace the ambulance, five hundred, two hundred, five hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty free cash. Replace the command vehicle, eighty-two thousand, five hundred from available articles. Computer workstation, seventy-five thousand free cash. Microsoft Office licenses, one hundred thousand free cash. Police marine unit, engine repower electronics upgrade, fifty-eight thousand, sixty-five dollars, thirty-three thousand from free cash, twenty-four thousand, almost twenty-five thousand from a grant. Replace Jenkins windows, nine hundred thousand borrowing. We're down to walnut interior painting, three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty free cash. Replace the HVAC at the sewer treatment plant, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eighteen dollars from sewer capital stabilization. First Parish pump station replacement construction phase, two million dollars. That's from borrowing. Sewer jetting and cleaning vehicle, six hundred and ninety-five thousand borrowing. I and I was not recommended this year, as mentioned previously.
What's that? The H always next to the.
It was a held item.
As we've noticed, we're holding on.
What about replace truck five dash two?
Did I miss? All right. Replace truck five dash two, seventy-eight thousand, eleven. Miscellaneous items, sewer retained earnings, sewer enterprise, sewer capital. It's all sewer. I and I not recommended, moving down, replacement. This was Widows Walk, replacement of equipment, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty from Widows or from the Gulf Enterprise retained earnings. Overhead rolling doors at the transfer station, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from transfer station retained earnings and available articles. We good?
Yeah.
Let's work. Replace truck three six utility boarding, one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from Water Enterprise retained earnings. Replace water mains phase nine, three point five million from borrowing. Manlock booster station improvements, twenty-five thousand from Water Enterprise retained earnings. Replacement of six-wheeler dump truck, two hundred and twenty thousand, Water Enterprise retained earnings. Booster station upgrade, Walnut Tree Hill, twenty-five thousand from Water retained earnings. Ten-year meter replacement, two hundred and sixty thousand, Water retained earnings. South River Dredge project, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, most of it from borrowing with five thousand from Waterways available articles. And that's the bottomless list. So we voted to recommend all but four items. Or three items. We did not recommend the engineering vehicle, forty thousand dollars. That was a four-to-one vote against. We did not recommend MS four, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four-to-one against. And the replacement of the ten-wheeler truck, three hundred and nine thousand. There was two, three opposed, two against, three opposed, two in favor. All of those were from free cash spending items. Would you digest that for a second?
I have a question now.
Yeah.
So if you're not recommending four hundred and ninety-five, nine thousand dollar free cash, where are you recommending that free cash?
We're getting it. We're getting it.
How do they go there?
There we go. Ollie, you take it.
Well, I mean, use of free cash, it to be put towards, when you think about all these small projects, right? Take that money and start paying for some of the bigger things. And we don't want to be borrowing as much as we need to, right? You know, we're borrowing in certain instances here. And the recommendation is, we don't want to borrow, we don't have to. From economic perspective, you know, pursuit of a healthy balance sheet is always important, right? You know, buy it, et cetera, and get it. But the reality is, it's uncertain economic times, and we want to be smart, use money appropriately. So I think in this instance, there's a lot of borrowing here. And we could be smarter about spending money. And instead of that free cash going there, go towards some of those other projects. I think that's how we view it.
Mike, elaborate?
Yeah, so you'll see, about sixty percent of this plan is borrowed. And out of the general fund, there's nine hundred thousand borrowing, and that's for Jenkins windows. If you add up the three projects that we would not recommend, it's about five hundred thousand in free cash, you could cut that far. I think there's a way to look at this where it's the value of alternative projects. And we've got a lot of big projects out in town right now, B U R treatment plan, which is getting budget with the school. So if we don't need to borrow as much during a stressed financial period, we should. There's certainly a perspective from community members that have extra money, free cash, let's call it. We should be putting that towards roads, sidewalks, or other things instead of buying additional vehicles. Now, we all know free cash doesn't mean we have to fund, because we are still borrowing. And if you look at this, there's a viewpoint of how we've allocated free cash, right? And if you add up all of the DPW highway engineering and public grounds requests, take out fourshore and roads and sidewalks, which we fund every year as capital projects, there's nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, it's all free cash. And that equates to the same as Jenkins windows, which is borrowed. If we flip that and we said, we're borrowing for everything DPW, and we're paying for Jenkins out of free cash, I think everyone would have a question, do we need those trucks? Why are we borrowing? We're looking at it a different way, because we're calling it free cash now. So again, those are the three items we didn't recommend. Two of the trucks that we don't feel are necessary. And then MS four is the ever-long discussion of a capital person operating expense. MS four is not a capital expense. There's no rational argument to make. We're in year seven. It's not new or novel, comes up every year. We know it's going to pursue into a federal mandate, federal requirement. You'll hear that this is an unfunded mandate. We should remove that from our nomenclature. That's not a good argument. If there's any sort of federal regulation, it's unfunded. They never give you a bucket of money to do this. We just have something that we need to figure out how to comply with.
So I don't disagree with you there, but where am I going to find the four hundred and fifty thousand? What I do for that?
Well, MS four, the hundred.
They're not, they're not, they're not. I need four hundred and fifty, because I've got to give sixty-six percent to the schools. So for me to find one fifty operating, I need to find six fifty.
Right, but.
So where am I going to find four hundred and fifty thousand?
So, but when we ask, what's the cost of the program? The average annual cost is fifty-seven five thousand dollars. And again, so we.
My question is, I've got a time to, when I do the financial forecasting, for me to find one hundred and fifty operating, I gotta find four hundred and fifty.
But why are you funding at a hundred and fifty? We've never accrued that much.
I gotta find out three hundred and fifty. We're now down to four hundred, I gotta find seven hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not sure where you're getting up to seven.
No, I know, because you're seeing the whole picture. That's what I'm trying to tell you, is that there's other. The issue is that when we talk about operating, where it's going to go, it's not fungible. Because every dollar that we find, the town side gives thirty-three cents. The schools get six, the rest.
Right, but this is funded through free cash, which is generated for return back, which is generated for return back from town parks. We are using a capital improvement plan here to further stretch the DPW budget, which is something that we need to fund every year.
Philosophically, I totally understand.
So, but if the purpose of this committee is to discuss capital projects, and whether it's a capital project that should be recommended for the town, this is not a capital expense.
To get out onto that point, we're meeting our progress strategic mandate, DPW department set overall. So we're either, we don't, that uses money, forgetting all of our goals, right? So there's other areas to save, right?
Listen, I'm happy to talk about the trucks, that's exactly what, you know.
No, I'm saying more broadly, if we're getting our mandate, there's got to be other areas that we can use five dollars, right?
Yeah, no, I'm just giving you the reason why it's difficult for me to move up one hundred and fifty thousand, because I have to now tell the library or other people, we're going to hire someone, now we have to start cutting. I mean, I'm getting the real reason why, not, and I love talking about, you can talk about the dump truck, if that's the right idea. I'm just giving you the reason, I'm not trying to argue with that. I'm just saying it's more difficult than just trying to find seventy-five, four hundred and fifty. I wish it were that simple. Jim and I totally.
No, we have this discussion the past couple of years. Right on the budget, we move, yeah. Unless we start cutting things out. Especially next year. We've already eliminated three full-time positions. Three full-time positions, the budget. And now you want to borrow one hundred and fifty thousand. The three positions I have bodies, another one hundred and fifty thousand, you're in the bodies. And as we talked about, every dollar I cut salary, I need to put fifty cents at the bottom line. So it's got one hundred and fifty thousand in bodies.
Some parts of municipal finance is passing up.
I'm not arguing with you, but this is a capital planning committee for capital expenses. So when we review this, and it's. So when we review this, and it's, should we recommend this capital item? This is not a capital item.
Yeah.
So if the town and the slot board wants to put forward items which are clearly operational to stretch it, that's fine. But you can't ask this committee to bless that when we're asked to review a capital improvement plan.
I don't overargue, I'm not arguing, I'm just giving you the reasoning. Relax, not arguing, I'm just telling you the reality of what's happening. And again, it's been, it's an open question if it's operating or, forget it, but let's.
So on that, so the fifth, so I have a. Philosophical, that's good philosophical. So I get, gosh now, I get the, okay, we can take money here, but Jenkins school borrowing, windows last thirty, forty years if we're lucky, right? With our Chris Pike. They'll last, you know, they're not going to, they're going to last a lot longer than a truck. So it's sort of a false equivalent, see, to say, oh, we'll take this money, because that's the whole point of borrowing, you borrow from your own premises. Right? So, I, I think that it's not apples to oranges to say, take this buck of money, because I think there are borrowing.
Well, that was my, you don't borrow money.
That was, that was my leading question. That was my leading question, because the use of free cash is, i- 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 if every town budget uses free cash, they collect what they had left over from last year, and they put it to things that are rather short-term but very important. And the, a dump truck to me is what free cash should be used for, as opposed to something like if.
Right, and then we also have a groundhog question of what's the threshold of actual capital?
Yeah, and I think, so it's, it's two different points, right? It's the philosophical, we're putting everything in D P W, we're calling it free cash, only looking at that, saying, oh, that's not going to get extra cash there, but we're borrowing for the windows. Flipping it there, that, that's one side of the point. The second is, we came up here with five hundred thousand, what, four ninety-nine?
Yeah.
Of, I think four ninety-nine, of items of free cash that the committee did not recommend. If you didn't do that, that would reduce your borrowing out of the general fund. So two, two separate.
Two separate things, and I get that, um.
But isn't it certified free cash? Could you have this cash?
Yep, oh, free cash is now the free no cash, that's the.
Yeah.
You know, it's used.
Not under the map.
I, I wouldn't say, I, I was at the capital budget committee meetings, I wouldn't say they didn't approve those things because they want to reallocate the free cash, they didn't approve because they didn't think they were necessary, right? For various reasons, and then that would free up the cash, it wasn't done to just free up the cash, they disagreed with my recommendation, department request that those things were necessary.
Couple of questions, I'm curious about the three-two split on the storage tank. You did approve it, but I was curious about the discussion on it, that would be, uh, D P W first highway. Your vote was three-two, who supported it? What would be the argument on that?
You're ahead, you were the one, you were the one who made that decision.
So, you know, first and foremost, we, you know, process, right, and scored a seventeen. Um, you know, looking at that, it's, I think it's just never liked in the process altogether, obviously, people have Chris Pike, and over the years it developed that, so you know, I think that's the first thing to look at seventeen is a pretty low score, uh, what you're talking about. I think number two is, there's never actually been a issue with the amount of gas that we've had, it never runs as an emergency, we're grand, we've never had a situation where there was an issue before, just because we have an eight thousand gallon diesel tank, when we did an eight thousand gallon gasoline one, especially when our school bus and other things have gone towards diesel, so it seems like dollars that don't need to be spent at the end of the day, and I understand the reasoning rationale, which is, you know, absolute emergency break, uh, breakneck scenario, we might need gasoline, massive back-to-back snowstorms, it's never actually happened. So what are we doing? We're enabling a fleet of extra vehicles by adding more gas, doesn't make sense to me, so I think the contingency plans, they're already in place, it's never actually happened. So I think this is something that's, you know, money that doesn't need to be spent overall, but that's me.
No.
No, that's, those are the discussion stuff.
Yeah. Um.
We did, we did.
You ended up ultimately, but I, you don't normally have that kind of split, so I was curious to see the discussion. Um, a couple of questions, Nancy, the bar has anticipated for the water, um, that they, you know, five, five point five million. Have we anticipated that at the current rate, or is that what they just?
No, we don't anticipate it in the current rate unless we have to use up, add to the debt service, and when we're ready for the project.
Oh, then we'll let things fall off, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, I can't remember, the dredging project, is that a matching?
There's a, uh, this is our share.
That's what I, I.
Yeah, it's Marshfield.
Yeah, Marshfield.
Marshfield put up some, and so away, and it's, it's closed, I mean, we need dredging that.
Oh, no, no, I know that, I just couldn't remember. But the project.
Major.
With the projects bigger.
Not, not to leave that, it's not a real major issue with that, because Marshfield is not three A compliant, and they will not be eligible for that, granted, they're not three A compliant.
And we also left the library, you mean, you're repeating off-line?
It's, it, it was approved last time, the question tell me.
Marshfield.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Do you have a, your question?
I do have a question, why are we not doing I and I?
Not enough for today's earnings.
And there's, there's still money in I and I that they're going to be spending, so we'll still be doing I and I, to spend that while we have. We can have the ability to support that without having to raise rates to do it.
Okay, so we have enough, I, we have money to continue I and I.
We'll still be doing I and I.
We've heard the, uh, potion plan, no, we did that. We took the approach.
There's two big ones going on.
Yeah, but this is the regular price sample of other smaller projects.
Be something small for a minute, just.
Yeah.
Try not to make great recommendations when it comes to raising the wrong money.
What we haven't talked about is last year we used on the front solar and wind.
That was on the operating budget, on the, on the seawall in the operating budget.
I thought we put that from that.
We did, there's, there's four hundred in road seawalls in the operating budget that I'm already recommending, that I didn't recommend, this year's budget, that the town board, board voting, that's a part of taking money from the solar and the wind account.
Okay, sorry.
That's a discussion later.
All right, so we got the two, so the two big open business, so tell us more specifically why this engine, the engineering vehicle, and then the truck, after looking at it, I think, um. I think you guys, but saw the truck and everything, so let's, tell me why you don't think, um, more specifically the engineering vehicle and the truck not recommended, besides putting it in other places?
The engineering vehicle, uh, was not recommended because it was, it's adding, adding another truck to the fleet. Uh, it was forty thousand out of free cash. You had a good argument for this?
Number one, I mean, going back to the score capital requisition process that already exists, the score was fourteen, bring that forward.
It's fourteen, okay.
It's, it's, uh, it's not even close to getting to a pass in discussion, but.
It's the lowest one on this list.
Yeah. It's a, I guess the, the ultimate question comes down to need to have it versus nice to have it when you have, you know, apartment dollars, right? In a lot of these instances, there are nice to have things, we'd love to have it, but the reality is, we'd rather have money that gets put into longer-term projects, infrastructure, whatever, maybe longer-term solutions. Adding a vehicle to a fleet where we don't know the total number of vehicles we currently have, we're starting to figure, figure that out, in the absence of preventative maintenance, and proaccompanying programs, et cetera, it's hard to green light something that's a nice to have, I think there are a few things we need to revisit from an operating perspective prior to just having an extra vehicle on.
And then the, the dump truck, we asked for it for itself.
First of all, what kind of vehicle that is, an engineering vehicle, what were we talking about?
They did, they did not, it's more to go around and cover for pieces, would have been coming off, we currently have the ability to do it, but there's some sharing between vehicles, what we heard. And there was also the feeling that there's about three or four other vehicles that we're replacing between the D P W infrastructure on here. If we just need an extra truck to be able to run while we can't share the existing ones, we can keep one of those to be able to do it, to cover that capacity.
And how about the dump truck? Let's go to four five, two thousand and six, international truck, same sort of thing, or is it?
So it's the same sort of thing, we currently have three ten-wheeled dump trucks, um, we're one of the only towns that's one of the ten-wheeled dump trucks. Uh, I was, I've been around a lot to see all three of these come into, I think, all, see all three of them. Uh, and there's just never been a real need, uh, the argument that we get from them is, you know, twenty fifteen, there was eight feet of snow. Well, you can't base your planning for snow removal on the one year that we had eight feet of snow. Uh, you gotta accept the fact that it's going to happen, and you're going to reallocate assets at that time. But we can't have trucks sitting around, you know, that we use once, twice a week. Uh, and, you know, it was the fact that, I mean, this truck only has eighty-five thousand miles on it, he's going to give you the argument that it has a million hours on it. I, and I'll show you five trucks in town that have a million miles on them. So these trucks are meant to move for a long, long time, this truck, right about the month, you know, because we're in salt all the time. I don't think it's necessary to replace right now, uh, you know, if, you know, and there's no, we're, we're meeting our goals, we're meeting, you know, we're meeting, you know, what we need to do on a daily basis, not running a trucking company. You know, we're not, you know, all, and, you know, that truck's not running back and forth constantly, it's sitting there waiting for something to do. Uh, and, you know, right now, where money is tight, I don't think it's necessary to spend three hundred and nine thousand dollars on, on a truck. The other thing about these trucks is they're infinitely rebuildable. Uh, you know, you can put a new motor or a new body in it, you know, it, there's a lot you can do with these trucks. We get the argument of downtime, there's two other ones sitting there. So there's not a whole lot of good argument, you have three ten-wheeler's, you know, town this size, uh, waiting for snow to have. You can do this, you know, you can do the same job that this truck does with, you know, a heavy grade six wheel, which we have a bunch of. Add one more six wheel, you know, the six wheeler that we're ordering is, you know, is eighty thousand dollars less than this truck. Uh, and eighty, ninety thousand dollars less than this truck. We don't need another ten wheeler is, is where I came down on that. This is, I'll, I'll also say, this is the first truck in thirteen years that I've pushed back.
Oh, I can, no, I can try to understand, I mean.
Saying something.
And I, yeah, I mean, try to get.
I have to check.
Buy it or not, everything.
No. First one.
All right, other questions?
No questions, I would like to hear their defense.
All right, one other question, there, there's a empty category for de-watering upgrade. One million eight hundred ninety thousand.
That's a.
Damn.
Yeah, that wasn't recommended, um, the sort of department is still finishing up their facilities report, or, okay. So we don't want to be spending a large amount of money if something else is more important than that. Go wait for that report to come up, because we've had a lot of issues.
Right?
Yes.
I used to open my mouth and, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I just have one question about the Jenkins, when there was, there used to be an accelerating repair program, it's in Willing Park. Are we out of the way to that because we're in big clubs with the.
It's not the big one.
We didn't put a statement of interest in, but there's so many people putting statements of interest to windows, that's really old, that's schools. Probably too young to, to be, have it, doesn't, it won't stop them from applying, but.
They'll, they'll apply.
Yeah, the petition I have, because the roof's weight replaced the roof because it clears this twenty-year thing.
Yes, we applied for the weight of the roof, we applied for the program, and then the program requires a complete alternative code, it costs that roof one million dollars to borrow that money.
That was high school.
Of the high school, so.
And the Jenkins group was too young, and we get the next seven.
So we'll apply, but it's probably going to be honest.
Just curious.
You don't want to wait until the windows are that old, that bad, like, oh, hey, look, we qualified.
Yeah, there were chains on that.
And I'm not going to ask a correct question, I'm going to ask you, what does H mean on this block of the.
So, so when I went through the list with the committee, we held those, those ones we started to.
And then we finally think so.
Exactly, similar to, yeah, way similar to the way we became the town.
You need, you need some notes on H P things, whatever.
It's, it's, you know, it's, it's an uneasy decision, I think.
This is great, okay, now we have, yeah, talking about, um, trucks and, yeah, that's really good, thank you, no? Very good on this tonight.
No, but while we're all in the room, I thought that we could.
Could you, what?
Just get the D P Ws.
They have five-minute, we're fine.
I don't mind, but.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Capital, we have five minutes.
I'm up, I got five minutes, okay.
I didn't, I really didn't want this to be a big debate, I wanted your deal with the capital to have their say, and if you got to have their say.
But, sure.
Well, we're going to have to debate it, but I think that, well, it's tough, mine at least, at least for me.
There, well, they're going to come present at some point, but they're.
All right, we want to wait.
Well, why don't we do that, why don't we wait for them to present, according to me, that gets them, I said it was five minutes, I respectfully ask that.
Yeah, they're like.
Is that, there'll be more, and then they, is that, I'm trying to perfect it.
No, the US board would like to be a part of this debate.
We've had, we've had our back and forth with them, you know, we've done the debate, this is our recommendations in court.
Okay. So are you not voting last night?
No.
Not at all. Are you sure? No, no, definitely not voting.
I'm not going to vote.
No.
I think it's worth, it's worth reviewing and.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us.
Appreciate it.
It's nice to see you, that you're paying attention for this.
All right.
I could have lost this.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Definitely.
You lost one?
I think clovers.
Uh, I think clovers.
Oh, I think clovers, Nancy. We're not going to call her, I know, so.
It's like again.
Yeah, I think clovers, we all would love.
I think it was, it was people.
Maybe they said that we'd die soon, so.
Did it last time we ran?
Okay. Our coastal lot of birds that we all love are piping clovers in our house. Um, that have to be monitored, and we have to report this. Yeah, you have to wait for that first. Um, so we put it out too big, because we've got so expensive, we now have to not qualify for lots of bid. Uh, we did it for two years, months, but we couldn't, um, at least try to control the cost as they keep going up. Uh, but then we all got one response that probably back in the past as well, um, Mass Autobahn was the one respondent. They've also been the one who has done it probably since I've worked here, they've worked to do it. So our option is to award a contract to them to go back up to bid again, or to do the work or fill in the staying ups.
Meaning throw another count of birds.
Well.
And, and, and the state can.
I mean, I know, really worth.
No, no, I just said the people working on us, I'm like.
Has anyone looked at the report, though? I just want to mention yes. How many birds we're talking about?
Poets?
Five birds.
They are dangerous.
In total.
Three were eaten by coyotes.
How do you know that?
It's in the report, last year's report, so.
I have to.
I just want people to know, again, another beacon hill.
They're slated to do this.
I, no, I know, but, and so this state is mandating us to spend ten thousand dollars a bird.
Per bird.
Per bird.
And this is vast, age two.
It's a, well, it's two.
Wait, I'm two years.
Five birds.
Five thousand bird, two years.
Yeah, two years, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's only five grand.
Only five thousand.
Five million a bird.
Go over the bill.
They're very good birds.
And if we have to do.
Well, total contract is ten thousand per, for two years.
And coastal zone management makes us do beach yard treatment, have created more habitat, which we will have to monitor.
But would you.
Then we'll, then we'll get more birds.
So could we hire C S C R to do this perhaps?
They'd have, they'd have to bid it.
They'd have to bid it.
And then respond.
The reason you haven't seen is falls under fifty thousand.
Do they know that? Could they do the work?
Well, yeah, what if someone bid under fifty thousand?
Like C S C R.
Well, we put it, it was a, it was a publicly available bid.
It was less than fifty, and I could have awarded that contract.
The second time we did it.
Yeah, you might have to bid it. He could have.
When does this need to be done? I'm, I'm just, here's a principle, I, I love the clovers, I support the clovers. I want them to live, it just seems like an awful lot of money.
We have, we have time, because, um, the next season, it has to start March of twenty twenty-five, so this is for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six season.
There's a chair, I suggest we table this in the program.
I agree, and I can, can I reach, am I allowed to reach out and see if I would pull the.
But we're going to have to put it back out to bid nine one.
Right, right, right.
You can, you can follow and ask them why they didn't bid.
Yeah, that's what I want. Yeah, that's what I'm like.
Didn't see if any.
Maybe they did.
I would, I would just have to work and take an actual look at this, of last year's report.
I will second your recommendation.
And. Motion of this. A motion, uh, to pay ball by, uh, Mr. Gilmore, and seconded by, I'm sorry.
I have one more question.
Well, we have a question before or a vote?
Question, further discussion?
Further discussion.
Uh, you said take it in house, what does that mean?
You, the passion that's got in house, um, the work is well, and, 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 and.
But they also gotta get out there, Karen, they gotta get out.
Twenty-two times.
I understand.
Twenty-two times.
And that would make the requirement for the state.
That's all, that's all, I would like to guess.
If we could figure that out, we would need the requirement of the state.
Then you have to file a report with the state about their next year habits, it's a, it's a.
Oh, yeah, that's the whole thing, yeah, alright.
I don't know of anyone in person, I'm not capable of doing that.
Yeah, I wanna be.
That's fine.
I'm trying to save money.
Alright.
I think one that had to go out in the spring, can you tell us this on?
Is it the spring, everything animals can dwell up there, it's fascinating.
In blades.
It's blade, back to me, it's not the spring.
There's, there's no words that blades, this last year.
Well, there's something up your shirt.
That's it, take a look.
We're, okay, a vote to table, so we have a vote, and a second, a second, it was five, uh, tables.
Alright.
Wait, I'm quiet, who made?
Uh, Mr. Gilmore made the motion.
My second.
To then.
And all in favor, what we have left, drain layers.
Drain layer, two minutes, and.
Send agenda to drain layers.
Okay, I will move to approve the drain layer license for Cobra Enterprises M C C Construction Incorporated.
Third, seconded by, it's, um, no, second.
Here we go.
I always worry about these things, because that's what people are like, get hurt. If, by falling into drain, literally being buried in this drain.
But we're renewing their license.
I know, I know, I didn't wanna second it, because I, it makes me.
Oh, okay.
Second is. So. We can all say. We can do that vote, send it to table, to.
To not award.
Not award the bid.
Yeah.
We've already, we've already moved on to the next thing.
Oh, we have to legally.
We have to do it, right?
Well, I, I'm just thinking, if, if Susan reviews out to C S R and solicits a bid, meant the whole bid, we have, we have to come procurement, and you have to bring up in the bid in house. You have a bid in house, so, and you have an item before you to award a contract.
So what do we, what do we have to properly do?
I vote, I recommend, uh, I vote that, uh, that we do not award the contract to, um, Mass Autobahn for the program.
And look out.
And then we'll come back to you when, uh, we're awarded, we did the package.
We did the package, okay.
Move, Miss Cantfield, seconded by, Mr. Harrison, all those in favor.
Aye, aye.
Uh, you know what you about the first vote that we already just talked.
I wrote through the same, the original sub of it.
Second.
I didn't have much.
Second.
Yeah.
Move, Miss Cantfield, seconded by Mr. Gilmore, all those in favor, and aye.
Thank you.
No, no, again, no, we have another motion that we now can hold on, which is the awarding of this con. So it's already the second.
The two, the drain layer license for Cobra Enterprises M C C Construction, and this is a renewal of drain layer license.
Right.
And it's already the second.
All in favor, aye.
No, just slow down, slow down. Drain layer, drain license, no, then, seconded, just, just we're getting totally off track. Sure, are you good?
Okay.
Okay, let's have a vote, the eight and a half, for the drain layers license.
Yes.
On fire.
Yeah, aye.
Everyone's talking over each other, just get through this, liaison reports. Would like to go.
Um, I just wanna note two things, I think you saw, I, I don't have the name in front of me, there's a West Point cadet coming for a coffee with a veterans.
Really?
Yeah, it's cool, and it's, it's next week, I don't have the name in front of me, um, but I can, I can look that up at my email. Uh, and the other thing I wanted to know is that, um. The, I, I liaise onto the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, they are, um, in the process of their annual slate of new officers nomination, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, they've been having a little, um, difficulty getting that, um, to that point, and they have asked me to facilitate a conversation. And right now it's scheduled for Monday, so that they can move forward with their new slate of officers. Uh, it may or may not happen, but I wanted the board to know if they have opportunity that, that agreed, if they would like to just to, just to coordinate about that reorganization, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's it, the fun. Then, okay, I'll go.
I have H T tomorrow night, uh, for a while, and then I also, what I'm aware of in the notes that I've been receiving from the historical commission, that there has been some new, not new, I shouldn't say new, there has been some situat history uncovered to add to the story of situat.
Rediscovered, maybe.
Yes, uncovered, rediscovered, so I'll have that, and, and, and it's just been in the, I've gotta get that out, and I'll, I'll kinda capitalize that until you send it all to me.
I call for your answers, I love it.
Yeah. I am good, yeah.
I probably, I, I can't, I don't know.
Uh, the date is Monday, for the West, West Point cadet Alex Christiansen will be at the Sanders Center at nine a.m. on the Monday, the week that, um. And unfortunately, I'll be in the train around, uh, better when he was around, that's funny.
Who, who's he have the nomination of, that should pass?
It's, apparently the West, um, West Point dads are required to, or they get, they get to come home early if they give community talks about their service and their mission.
Right, this, their original firm, so.
Yes, okay.
That's awesome.
So it's pretty cool.
Any, Mr. Kirk, any correspondence that we're?
There is no point in talking to somebody.
That's all right, we have, uh, some approval of giving a motion for me to go last night, and also for.
November fifth.
November fifth.
Motion to accept the minutes as written.
For those two dates, uh, move by the.
November fifth and November eighteen.
Thank you, moved, uh, and seconded by, uh, Ms. Harris.
What's the?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion adjourned.
We're sorry, I have.
Nine, twenty.
Was it nine, nineteen?
All those in favor, uh, sorry, by.